My executive order N 2920 issued on March 18, 2020, NMUSD Board meetings will be closed to the public. Spanish interpretation will be available via Zoom. We're calling to order an opening ceremony, a moment of reflection and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. There's a note from Leah that she can't hear.
Here. Here. Here.
I'm, oh. I can't hear anything in the boardroom.
Adopt the agenda. Yes. We're getting signals that there is, that no one can hear. No, they're not hearing us.
Rosie, are you using? Can you? One, one. I have no idea. She can't hear any.
Here. I mean. Here. Meaning yes. Leah said she can hear Carol Sharp, but not Karen or Rosie.
Yeah. Is your little light on in your mic? Pull the fuzzy off.
She can also hear Bob.
Okay. I don't hear it. Mr. Lee Sung, is yours working? Maybe it's just that half. We're good, so. It's just that half. Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Bob, we can't hear in the room signing up the speakers. We want to be able to hear Trustee Ursulu and Trustee Anderson in the room. Can you guys hear?
Well, they're both muted right now.
Okay, but when they do speak.
Would you like us to?
Trustee Anderson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
But we can't hear her.
But we can't hear her.
Yeah, we need the speakers turned up. As long as we're ready.
Okay.
Karen, did you hear? Ask Trustee Anderson to speak.
Trustee Anderson, could you speak so we can see if we can hear you?
Good morning, how are you? Can you hear me now?
Community input on special agenda items only, Trustee Matoye.
Speakers wishing to address the board on special agenda topics have submitted, have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, February 22, 2021. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 30 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Okay, we had one comment card and that person Wendy Leece will be speaking on Zoom, so we're going to see if we can get this to work today. Susan, can you help us with this?
Yes, Wendy Leece, please unmute your mic and you may begin speaking.
Okay, wonderful, good morning. Oh, progress, I love it. Thank you so much for making live comments possible. And I appreciate that you're having a study. Maybe if I don't, the study session. Having been on the school board and the city council, I really valued study sessions a lot. So I hope that you can discuss a lot of important issues. I'll cut to the chase and may, maybe we won't have so much backup. Okay, I'm thankful that the principals are there today because I think that the principals and the teachers working together to identify those students who are struggling is the goal today. My grandson is in second grade at Smith School in Huntington Beach and put in an after-school tutoring program with some recreation so that he can be helped and kept from falling back too far back. My daughter did. The homeschooling. Thing didn't go too well. Okay, my last comment. By identifying these young people who need extra help and hiring tutors, you will be saving lives. You all know that I teach at a psych hospital and. We are. More and more kids overwhelmed by the effects of COVID with depression and anxiety, desire to end their life. You will be saving lives now on the front end rather than having these kids so depressed and anxious or that they, they end up at. Eps. So if you, you don't do something today, you're going to see a lot more kids are going to be requesting IEPs and 504 plans. So it's best that you decide today, cut to the chase, and make these decisions to get these kiddies extra help. Thank you.
President Yelsey, there are no more speakers in the queue.
Next meeting, but thank you very much. Okay, having no more comments, we will move to the board's study session, which is the current state of teaching and learning discussion with transitional kindergarten through grade 12 principals. Mr. Drake?
So, good morning, President Yelsey, members of the board, Superintendent Lee Sung, cabinet guests. Thank you today for, once again, spending a considerable amount of time focusing on teaching and learning. It's very important to all of us and we know for our time together today, you asked to have a discussion, not a presentation, but a discussion with all 33 principals, and that's what we've set out to do today. Knowing that second to the impact that teachers have, current research talks about the, the second greatest impact of learning besides the teacher in front of kids every single day is the instructional leadership at a site. So it's incredibly important to hear from our principals today in relation to the current state of learning at their sites. And, and the impact that the last 12 months of the pandemic has had. And so this is your time to discuss with the, our principals in relation to their current state. I do want to kind of put some ground rules out there. Whether you follow them or not is up to you as, as this is your meeting, but, but the goal is to hear from all 33 principals. And so what we've set out for today is we've planned for each zone in elementary school, we're going to start with elementary, to have 30 minutes with each of you. And we've asked each principal to spend no more than three minutes giving you a broad stroke overview of current state and how things are in the context of pandemic in relation to teaching and learning at their sites and some of the things they're doing to support and overcome some of those challenges. So within that 30 minutes, each principal will have, like I said, about three minutes, which gives about 15 minutes for discussion with each zone and principals from you. I'm going to do my very best to have us stick to that 30 minutes so that we, in the two-hour timeframe that we've got, get to all the principals and all the zones. And so that's our goal today. And before I ask George Knights to come up and just explain very briefly some of the data that we've given you up to this point, I do think it's important because I never take enough time to say thank you to our principals. It's, it's one of those things I'm working on, you know, to make sure that we're acknowledging the work. But what, what our 33 principals have done over the last year again is incredible. Obviously, a major focus has been creating that safe space for kids and teachers and staff to teach and learn in. And they've just done an incredible job and so publicly I just wanted to make sure that I'm acknowledging and thanking them for all of the, you know, blood, sweat and tears that they've put in specifically this last year, but really over their careers. And so before we jump in and start with the Costa Mesa Zone, I do want George Knights to come up and just provide a little context to the data that you, you've received this last Friday.
Thank you, John. Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I've provided to you a couple of documents at, at your request. One is the data. So you've requested Sback data and, and you've seen a lot of data before when the last study session for the elementary. So I didn't provide that again to you, but I did provide to you the secondary instructional reading level data. So when you look at that first data, board study session data slides, that packet is the data. Sorry, I crammed a lot on single pages so that it's kind of easy to reference. But. Yes, so that is what you requested. So let me make a couple of. Sorry, the second thing I provided to you is the board's study session for the secondary principals, their reports on the, I don't know if you have something for the elementary, but I think they're going to give verbal reports as well as the secondary, but they also had a presentation on Google Slides. So we'll get to that one when we can, so that's why you have two packets. So let me talk a bit about the, the smarter balanced assessments and you have two documents in your data packet for the ELA results and the math results. So I've given them to you, you're no stranger to this data because it's almost two years old. It was 1819 when we last were, had a testing season and then a year went by and we had the pandemic, so we waived the testing for that year. So it only goes up to really 1819, but it goes back five years and provides a historical context longitudinally for both math and English language arts. That's the benefit of having it here today. The context has changed dramatically, as you know, after a pandemic hits and we have a completely different context by which we are even instructionally designing and, and teaching our kids. So on, we don't know what this data will look like when we get another season. In fact, the, the State Board of Education meets tomorrow to decide whether we will even have a testing season this year. So no word on that, Tom. Tomorrow, there will be a meeting and we'll find out more then. I am just praying that we'll learn something so my team can move forward to instruct the principals. So I look forward to that. So on, what I wanted to do was just show you, so if you pulled up the blue, that's English language arts, exactly, and you'll see from left to right, the growth from 2015-19 ranked by school. So this, it's the growth, not the overall. If you look at the overall results in the middle, you'll see from 2015 to 2019, the overall district score beginning at 53% in 2015 and ending in 2019 at 63%. So that historical context that we sit today with the best data we have available for the only state standardized test that we have available that measures performance of our students on the standards for the state of California, formerly known as the Common Core Standards, but they are now adopted as the California State Standards. Below that overall, you will see grade levels. I'm sorry, you'll have to use your spectacles to look at some of this data, but it's there and it's fairly clear if you look closely. And then you have our subgroups and EL status. On the far right, you have the five-year progress for each school and it's ranked by the last year's highest score for early college was at 85%. So that's what you see and the blue always represents English language arts. And if you flip the page, the green always represents math and it's set up exactly the same way. So I wanted to start with that data, just so you have that historical context.
Before you leave, the far right chart has different gradations, gradations of darkness and lightness.
Yes.
And that one didn't have a key, so what, what is the significance?
So the darker the blue?
The better the score.
Well, it is the better the score compared to the district average.
Okay.
So any of the gray is below the district average and the darker blue is above the district average. So exceed, meet. And then?
Almost.
Yes.
Okay.
Nearly and then below.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. We're going to go ahead and just jump on in and start the discussion. And again, as George reiterated, those Sback scores obviously are in a completely different context, being two years old and knowing, you know, the context that the pandemic has kind of thrust upon us at our, at our school sites. We're going to start with the Costa Mesa Zone and so as those principals start turning on their cameras, I'm also going to ask them to open their ears a little bit because there's a piece of the direction that I haven't yet provided you. Because we're going to be switching to Zoom for them to be heard in, in the public. Principals, I am going to ask you to go ahead and hand off after your three minutes to your colleagues in your zone. So whatever order you go in, I know I provided you an order last night, but if you go out of order, as long as everybody gets an opportunity to speak, that would be great and that prevents us from having to switch back and forth. So once you've given your three minutes, go ahead and hand it off to one of your colleagues in your zones. And for this zone as well, we have included the Cloud Campus and Dr. Mike Shaka in the Costa Mesa Zone, just to provide the Cloud Campus perspective and context. So we are going to start in Costa Mesa Zone with Mia Deutsch. Mia, I'm going to go ahead and have, ask you to go ahead and start and we'll, we'll go from there. Thank you.
Good morning, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to share about the current state of teaching and learning at Sonora. Before I share our story, I'd like to acknowledge my amazing teachers and staff and their collective efforts that have allowed us to move forward during this unique time. It has been so great having our students back on campus. They are happy to be at school with their teachers and friends and have adapted well to wearing masks and learning with plexiglass surrounding their desks. Due to the unique time that we're in, we faced different challenges this year and have worked together to address the academic and social emotional needs of our students. Sonora has four hourly support teachers and one full-time hourly support teacher. In the beginning of the year, we assessed all students virtually in a cadence reading and after looking at the data, identified 191 students to participate in our Tier Two intervention. Our Tier Two intervention occurs virtually and we provide three sections of level literacy intervention to students in grades five and six and the rest of the groups are focused on SIPs, which is the systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics and sight words in grades kindergarten through five. One of the big challenges is that there are students who don't consistently sign into Zoom to attend intervention and to this day, some students still haven't attended. We've offered outreach to these students through the classroom teacher, the school community facilitator, or myself to encourage participation. Sonora teachers have also really worked on providing effective Tier One instruction by maximizing the time that they have with students in each cohort. We've worked on narrowing the focus to prioritize instructional content in both ELA and math and teachers assign asynchronous work to students to reinforce and apply their learning. One major challenge that isn't unique to Sonora is that many students are not completing their asynchronous work. Teachers have worked tirelessly to encourage work completion, but we recognize that students who have the support at home are completing their work and students who don't have the family infrastructure aren't as apt to do so. To help motivate students, we've started acknowledging them every two weeks through asynchronous or dance parties and many teachers have implemented a weekly progress report to keep parents informed of their child's progress. With the pandemic, our children have had to inevitably adapt to different environments at home, school, and in the community. We've worked to restore relationships and build a sense of community by implementing morning meetings. As a site, we purchased comm classroom for each classroom to support mindfulness, self-awareness and emotional well-being. Many of our families have lost jobs, contracted COVID-19, and even worse, lost loved ones. Sonora has two children who have been deeply impacted by the loss of a parent and guardians. Children like these, along with an additional 13 other children, have been referred to our Sale Behavior Specialist who provides individual counseling virtually. Each Thursday morning, we staff on students to refer for counseling and follow up on those receiving support. We've also referred students to Carisolus, have the school community facilitator offer resources, and have utilized home visits to support our kids. As relentless as this year has, has been, things are operating relatively smoothly and we're making good progress overall. Thank you so much for your time and I'd like to introduce my colleague, Kristi Flores.
Good morning, trustees. This year has presented many challenges for our families, staff, and of course, our students. I can't let an opportunity go by in presenting about Davis Magnet School without first sharing how proud I am of our teachers, classified support staff, the continued partnership with our parents, and most definitely, our amazing students. We have experienced challenges and faced adversity, but the Davis Magnet School community has continued to move forward as a dedicated team focused on doing whatever is necessary to provide the best support for our students. I'm grateful for the solid foundation that our team has built with a multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, which supports students academically and socially and emotionally. The modified instructional days, inconsistencies and asynchronous work completion, observable decrease in motivation and engagement, and physical restrictions have created challenges unlike before. Yet despite these challenges, our students continue to persevere and demonstrate understanding. Teachers have been creative in their planning while focusing on essential grade level standards and applying various strategies and tools to keep students engaged and learning. Our hourly support teachers have been fantastic in, in managing our response to intervention, or RTI, while leading small group instruction via Zoom with a special emphasis on early literacy and foundational skills with our SIPs groups. Additionally, our students have developed skills and strategies in time management, independent work habits, and technology unlike ever before. At Davis, we have always believed that you have to Maslow before you Bloom, meaning that we need to ensure our students' social, emotional needs and mental health are supported before we expect academic success. Our students have experienced a lot of change. Some families have experienced loss, whether it be in income or even a family member or friend. It is a constant juggling act for families, which can be stressful for students. Although none of us have received professional development in supporting students during a global pandemic, our team of teachers have participated in a variety of trainings over the past several years to support students' social, emotional learning. This has helped us a lot this past year. One of the challenges for our teachers has been to establish connections with students within a short period of time. We are grateful for the opportunity to collaborate with the district Student Services Department, where we have been piloting a well-being index. The well-being index is designed to assess students' positive feeling and functioning. It consists of only six questions and addresses a student's energy level, sleep, hopefulness, mood, engagement, sense of connectedness, and the feeling of being valued and accepted. The well-being index has validated our already established support from the classroom teachers, the PBIS Tier Two strategies such as check-in, check-out, along with the resources and counseling provided by our Behavior Specialist and Sale Team Member. Most importantly, it has provided important direction for us to help students who might have flown under the radar without this tool. I'm proud of the Davis Magnet School community. We've continued to persevere, worked as a team, and found creative solutions to help students learn while keeping our community connected even with six feet distancing. Thank you for your continued support and the opportunity to share about Davis Magnet School. It is now my pleasure to turn it over to Lori Hogard and Laura Sosa at Kelly Brook.
Good morning, trustees. I'd also like to acknowledge the incredible team of teachers and staff at Kelly Brook who have shown true unwavering commitment to support our students in both academic and their social, emotional development during this challenging time in our world. And the Kelly Brook families who have demonstrated such incredible resiliency in supporting their students to engage in both distance learning as well as the many changes that come about with the hybrid scheduling while being faced with drastic changes in their own workplaces, their family resources, and the many health-related impacts that have come with COVID-19. The impact of the pandemic required us all to adapt in many, many ways as we work together to support our children. But the one thing that didn't change is our overarching goal as educators and as families, and that's to help our children grow and learn and thrive. And that is what's been happening at Kelly Brook. As we transitioned into the school year, our guiding questions as a staff have been, how can we address the unfinished learning and also at the same time prioritize grade level content to move all students forward in their learning? We also were guided by a question, how do we foster a positive and caring experience for our children who haven't had the same opportunities for social connection and this access to the school environment as in prior years? Our fall 2020 reading data showed that a higher number of students scored below our grade level expectation at the beginning of the year when compared with years past. And also in comparing our growth data for years, we did see an impact of the pandemic on how many students were showing a year's growth in a year's time. So as our Kelly Brook team always does, we rolled up our sleeves and got to work and began to work to accelerate learning for every child in every classroom and through all of our support systems. and began to work to accelerate learning for every child in every classroom and through all of our support systems. Our Killebrook students, our Killebrook teachers have shown a true commitment to maximizing every moment of the in-person time with each of their cohorts. And they're making really wise decisions about what to do in the classroom as well as what to assign for asynchronous work that will be meaningful to move learning forward. Our tier two support team with our hourly teachers called our SOAR program at Killebrook, they're working closely with our classroom teachers to supplement that core classroom instruction in the area of foundational reading skills, reading comprehension, and mathematical support. So as we work to continually adapt our systems to accelerate student learning, one thing that we found at Killebrook is that student engagement is critical. Teachers are finding that the majority of students that are engaging in both the in-person instruction and completing the asynchronous work assigned and participating in any supplemental Zoom sessions with the hourly support teachers are showing progress to either stay on or accelerate towards a trajectory of grade level progress. And increasing this our student engagement really involves an all-hands-on-deck approach. Working closely with our school community facilitator, our office team, our health team, our teachers, our specialists, we're all working together to strategize how to help students sustain engagement and learning with under each of those conditions. And it takes a lot of individual case management as well as our school-wide recognition systems with our weekly motivational Zoom assemblies. So I'm going to turn this over now to Mrs. Sosa, who I'd like to say has done an amazing job hitting the ground running and leading the Killebrook team. Mrs. Sosa.
Good morning trustees. I would like to add to what Dr. Hogard shared by highlighting the supplemental Zoom sessions offered by the Killebrook SOAR team. This team, in collaboration with our primary classroom teachers, participated in extensive data analysis with Acadia's STAR and other SIPs progress monitoring data to evaluate program effectiveness and supporting student growth. Additionally, intervention groups were disassembled and restructured based on targeted areas of need for strategic allocation of instructional support to those students who would benefit from tier two intervention during their off-cohort time. Students were able to exit this program to allow space for additional students to gain additional small group time with credentialed teachers. It is the fluid nature of this intervention grouping that allows many students to benefit from the services offered by our talented SOAR team. An additional success I would like to highlight is the work of the PBIS team with support from our student council in maintaining a positive and welcoming environment for our students. Their continuous planning of activities that fall within the guidance of the health department's regulations keeps the positive school culture alive for students and staff and facilitates social opportunities for our students. For example, classes participated in Sweetheart Lane, a holiday-themed obstacle course activity, which offered opportunities for class building and provided a small but exciting diversion from their daily routine. The PBIS team's commitment to student engagement and fostering an inviting and joyful school culture is one of the reasons Killebrook is such an outstanding school. And I would like to introduce my colleague, Annalisa Schwartz.
Good morning trustees. Thank you for your time today. As the new administrator at Pollerino, I have not seen campus prior to school closure and I've only known the Pollerino teachers, staff, community, and students during this new phase of education. That being said, Pollerino is a wonderful campus and community and I'm so fortunate to be here. First, our teachers are the true heroes of this pandemic. They have risen to the occasion, up their tech skills, and are beyond flexible to meet the needs of our students. Thank you to all of our teachers for their hard work and dedication to the education of our students. I really need to make sure that I say that our students are beyond resilient. Our students have changed their learning platform many times, adapted to new technologies, all during a global pandemic and are now safely on campus and adhering to all of our safety measures to be able to be here and learning each day. At Pollerino, we face similar challenges to other campuses. Our biggest challenge this school year was attendance in seat, on Zoom, the completion of asynchronous work, and the attendance of students who are, the attendance concerns of students who are in quarantine or self-isolating. This pandemic hit our families hard. Some parents are working multiple jobs. Some are not allowed to work due to closures. We've multigenerational homes and families that are concerned about the added exposure if a child attends in-person instruction. Tech skills are difficult for some of our families. So logging into Zoom is not always a priority for our families. Ways that we've been able to better support our students with attendance by calling and checking in to see if we can better support our families, seeing if there's something that we can do to address these concerns, whether it's a hotspot, an updated Chromebook, or if there's something bigger going on and we need to help with food and clothing. We've identified those who are concerned to be on campus, have addressed those individual and unique concerns, and those students are now attending whether it's in person or through our cloud campus. Another challenge is the academic exposure for all of our students. We're noticing that our students who were struggling prior to school closure are still struggling. They're the ones who are not logging in. They're the ones not completing their asynchronous work and the ones who really need that extra assistance. Ways that we've been able to support and better make use of our resources is we've revamped our SST process to better understand those academic, social, emotional, and behavioral struggles of our students. We also are very fortunate to have a robust wellness center at Pollerino that's gone all virtual this year. With the support of Dr. Riva, a local pediatrician, our school nurse, our school community facilitator, our school psychologist, our district sales specialist, and our social workers, we've been able to team together to discuss student concerns and look at how to support our kiddos through different avenues. We currently have referred over 20 students through this process and continue to give them supports and services to better meet their, meet their needs. We are fortunate at Pollerino to have four credentialed hourly support teachers. They've changed the face of instruction for intervention and have gone all digital with Zoom. Our first round of intervention, we were able to support 95 students through interventions 40s a week during their asynchronous time. And our current round of intervention was supporting 107 students. I do have to say that our biggest success is our safety procedures and measures. Our students are on campus. Our students are learning and they're adhering to everything we've asked them to do. We're making progress at Pollerino and our students are happy to be back. I thank you for your time and I'd now like to introduce my colleague, Jake Tepetti at College Park.
Thank you. Good morning trustees. This is my second year here at College Park. This last year as an AP and this year serving as the interim principal. I'd like to share that many of the life challenges imposed by the pandemic on our families have been things such as loss of jobs, changing work hours, adjusting to our new hybrid schedule, illness. And it's made it difficult for many of our families to adjust to and support our new model in education. These challenges from the pandemic in turn often result in lower rates of students completing asynchronous work, which you've heard from my colleagues. We've also experienced students struggling to consistently attend Zoom sessions with specialists, special ed providers, and hourly support teachers. Our response at College Park has been focused on maximizing the time we have with our students during our live instruction on campus and through the use of our hourly support teachers via Zoom during their off-cohort time. High-quality instruction has been provided by our classroom teachers in English language arts and in math each and every day to our students during their AM or PM cohort times. And our classrooms teachers have been our first line of support in regards to supporting not only academics but providing daily social, emotional support for our students by providing a safe and consistent environment to feel welcome in and to learn in each and every day. I want to personally thank our classroom teachers for their incredible efforts day in and day out. It is truly remarkable what they have done for our students and the consistency that they provide for them each and every day. In regards to our hourly support team, we're now seeing close to 150 students to provide systematic reading instruction to our students who are currently below grade level. They're being seen 30 minutes a day for four days a week via Zoom. We've really focused on keeping these groups very small so that our teachers, although working via Zoom and remotely, do have an opportunity to monitor them closely and hear them, read to them, and hear them, speak to them, and really provide the best in-person via Zoom instruction that they possibly can. Our teachers have taken a very collaborative approach with our hourly and classroom teachers working closely together and sharing and tracking data of our student growth via Intervention Compass, which is a new platform that College Park is continuing to explore this year. We, like many other schools, have been utilizing our school community facilitator along with our classroom teachers, office support staff, our health office in order to support our families and ensure that our students are connecting via Zoom while not on campus. The, while there have been many hurdles to overcome during this past year and there's still going to be more in front of us, I'm incredibly proud of our College Park staff and our community for their hard work and dedication to support our students through this pandemic. We know that the challenges that have come to our community have been very real. From illness to job challenges to oftentimes the loss of a loved one. And our staff, our students have done such an amazing job of showing resiliency and continuing to move forward through the challenges that are in front of them. Again, thank you for your time and thank you to our incredible community and to our staff for their hard work. At this, I would like to introduce you to my colleague, Mr. Michael Shaka with our Cloud Campus.
Thanks Jake. Good morning trustees. I'm Mike Shaka and I am the principal of Cloud Campus. Cloud Campus is in a slightly different situation than the majority of our schools by the sound of, of the conversations we've already started to have. And, and taking a quick moment to, to remind everyone of the Cloud Campus journey. Seven months ago, Cloud Campus didn't even exist as an idea. And in that short period of time, we've grown into what our current TK6 population of 1,204 students that we serve. So we're really dancing with about 15% of our district population, which means the stakes are high and we really have to make sure these kids are prepared as many of them will assimilate back into their brick and mortar schools at some point in the future. So looking at the data, both qualitative and quantitative and anecdotally of what, what we're seeing at Cloud Campus and first and foremost is learning is happening at normal rates when you look at proficiency cut points. What we're seeing with our data is what we would expect in a typical year in terms of percentage of kids that, that match that proficiency cut point on paper. And I think that's a real positive because it speaks to the high-quality learning that is happening in our virtual classrooms. In addition, if you look at our SGP, our SGP is performing very, very well right now, which is comparing our students to a bucket of students with similar, you know, similar performance backgrounds nationwide. So we're really excited to see that piece of data as well. The next piece of data is we surveyed all of our students right before break, kind of our own version of a, of a mini healthy kids survey that focuses on connectedness to school. And what we found is that the vast majority of our students feel very connected to an adult, primarily their teacher on campus. They feel cared about, connected and supported by an adult on campus. Those are positive pieces of data that we're building on as we move forward. However, our data also shows Cloud Campus is not the equalizer a school is supposed to be. And this is really important for us to acknowledge. Traditionally, schools serve as that equalizing platform to where kids from all backgrounds, levels of support, income, et cetera, can come to a school and feel safe, supported, and taken care of equally. We have them in a physical space traditionally and we can ensure that learning happens at school. That's not the case at Cloud. We don't have that same ability to ensure that space distraction-free of learning. And that's been a huge challenge for our Cloud Campus families. It's exposed huge disparities. Our kids who have support and are able to engage are doing very well. Our kids who are not, aren't. And that gap is widening. So while on paper, we see those proficiency levels moving along, the kids who are not doing well are doing worse than they have in years past. In, in addition, we are also on that same connectedness survey, you know, how, how kids feel connected to the school. Our kids indicated while feeling very connected to the adult on campus, they are feeling less connected to students on campus. They're having a hard time making new friends. And as a school that brings in 22 different feeder schools, it's been critical to, to continue to experiment and really push ways where kids can connect to other kids. That's, that's been an area of challenge that is a top priority, but we have not figured out the magic elixir yet. Finally, I think it's important to recognize how agile Cloud Campus has been. As we learn, we change and adapt, and that's been a strength of Cloud Campus. You know, we, we aren't set in our ways because of the newness of the school. So we've been able to pivot very quickly as we learn, as we experiment. Again, this is working, this is not working, and I have to give, again, like so many huge kudos to our staff who's been open-minded and, and student-centered from, from day one. We've done a good job at matching resources to need. You can see direct impact in our data when resources are matched to identified student need, and that's been another observation on, on my part. And finally, I go back to what I started this year with. When, when you put great teachers in front of kids, great things happen. It doesn't, it doesn't downplay the challenges, the enormous challenges that we continue to face. But that's really been our defining characteristic is, is great people in front of our kids. And that's how Cloud Campus will continue to move forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we've got about 10 minutes for open discussion after hearing what, what the principals have shared from the Costa Mesa Zone.
I have a couple of questions. I took some notes. For the intervention, I think at Davis, what was the system you're using to catch kids who will fall, have fallen under the radar or might fall under the radar for assessment?
Are you referring academically or the wellbeing index that I mentioned to support students socially and emotionally?
Familiar with that. Oh, yes, that's the one I'm unfamiliar with, the wellbeing index. Thank you.
The wellbeing index?
Yes. So the wellbeing index is from an organization called Turnaround for Children. And we had the opportunity to collaborate with our district student services department, as I mentioned. And so in working with our sale behavior specialist in collaboration with her and just talking as a PBS team, we decided that it was best to start with using this tool with our third and fourth grade students. And the reason that we started with our third and fourth grade students is just thinking about the levels that they are at and the mid-grade level range here at the elementary site. So our behavior specialist took the six questions and turned it into a Google form. And then each of our teachers, our third and fourth grade teachers led students through the six-question form. And it really gave us an idea about how they are feeling and how they are functioning. And then our behavior specialist has taken that data and has met with each of the third and fourth grade teachers to review their individual class data. And again, it's been really helpful because it has validated what we've already had in place, those tier-one supports with the classroom teacher. But also our PBIS team has been working closely to provide tier-two support such as check-in, check-out, that those systems are working. But it also gave us an insight based on how students were answering those questions of who might need additional support. Our next step.
Really great.
It really has been. I love it because it's only six questions. And as I mentioned, one of our challenges that we faced is that, you know, students are here for two and a half hours. It is extremely focused and structured during that time. And so it has really changed our ability to connect, to observe students' behaviors, to find out how they are doing, you know, here at school and at home. And so it just gave us a really small snapshot. And then our next steps, we are progressing to utilize this tool with our fifth and sixth grade students. And then we'll utilize this tool with our primary HRK through second grade.
Thank you. That's really great.
Trustee Crane?
Yeah, I have a question for Jake at College Park. So you had mentioned that you identified 150 students that were below grade level. Can you speak to two points? One, have you been able to sustain engagement throughout from when you first identified these students and then also the results that you have seen as far as a long-term progress? from when you first identified these students? And then also the results that you have seen as far as a long-term progress or not?
Sure. So starting off, you know, getting our students engaged with our hourly support teachers was more challenging for some families than others. We did have to utilize our school community facilitator, our office staff, really making sure that our, our families were supported to make sure they had all the right equipment, make sure that they, they knew the hotspot, basically all of those hardware logistics. And then just continuing to make sure that the families understood the importance of this time. That was really critical for their kids to be given that extra support. I hope that, does that answer your first question as far as like how we've been able to sustain that, that engagement? Secondly, we have seen some really tremendous growth from our students and the students that are engaging and logging on and getting that extra support with that, that tier two intervention have shown a lot of growth. Our data has shown something I think pretty incredible too, you know, although we have seen some dips in the amount of students that are at that proficient level. The, the data that I've been going through recently has been trying to capture growth of our students over a year's time from last winter to this winter. And then I've compared it to a year previous. And what I'm really encouraged by seeing is that those growth rates are about the same. And I'll be to share with you, it's around 63, 64%. Now, this isn't an exact science because we have to look at growth trends, which sometimes can be a little bit difficult. But in all reality, our students are growing and they're growing about the same rate that they were growing in years previous, which is really great. Now, we still have work to do at College Park. We still have work to get our students above that grade level mark from any of them. But we are seeing students progress at a year's rate for many of them and many of them beyond that. And I think that's due to the incredible work that our teachers are doing while students are on campus. And the, the high focus that we have for them to be engaged in that intervention time with our hourly support students receiving that systematic instruction in reading.
Thank you.
Do I have any more?
Oh, you have, okay.
I have a question.
Fine. I'm looking at, I was seeing raised hands and I didn't see.
Oh, I, I lighted. I did it old school. Did you, if someone else went first, I'm fine.
No, no, go ahead.
I noticed that a commonality, and I bet you this is going to be district wide, is the students are working phenomenally with, when they're in the classroom in a nice, small group, I might add, that's really kind of nice. But asynchronous participation is the, is our, is our speed bump. That's the problem because we have no control at home who logs on. Has there been any attention paid to what part of asynchronous is not being happening? Because we also know that our music PE and science specialists are doing the asynchronous and teachers are providing asynchronous. Has there, is there any discrepancy between participation in the asynchronous learning that you've noticed? If you haven't taken the time to check that out, I'm okay with that. I just was curious. Whoever would like to go first.
Sure. I think that for our families, that if it's difficult for one of those pieces, it's showing difficult for all of them. And I don't think that we have, I don't think that they're necessarily picking and choosing that. I think that a lot of times it's very contingent upon challenges for our families, logistically, job wise, health wise. And that oftentimes impacts all of the asynchronous work that's being done. We at College Park, and I'm sure our colleagues, my colleagues as well, have really tried to focus on getting our, our students connected to that in person. As much in-person time as we can get them. We've put a lot of eggs in that basket to utilize our resources to keep our students engaged with teachers as much as possible.
I'm going to call on trustee Anderson. We only have one minute left here, so there'll be one more comment and then we'll move on and we can always come back to general issues. Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I have one question for Mr. Topetti about the dual Mandarin program and what that is looking like practically. Is that difficult with some of the components? I would imagine is a little bit trickier in this time. And then I wanted to know a little bit more too, from Dr. Hogard about the attendance that you're seeing an impact from the in-person sale intervention support. Because I like, to me, that's something that if we can get intervention support on campus in small groups, I think that's going to be a game changer. So what does the attendance look like and how, how is that process fun? Thanks.
I'll go first if you want. Our Mandarin program, you know, despite the challenges that have been for everybody, I think has really been doing a really remarkable job. And our students are really incredible. Our teachers just finished and are actually still kind of in the process of celebrating the new year. And so that's been exciting. They've come up with new creative ways to do it. In the past, they've had some really great parades for our community and for our staff, and they've been putting together some new virtual items for them. They're continuing to layer in a lot of those Mandarin components throughout their days. And it's, you know, one of the strengths of our teachers that we have on campus, that they provide our EOL instruction, our math instruction, and also that Mandarin instruction as well too. So, you know, we've had to make sure that our students are really receiving those key core components of EOL and math, but our teachers are remarkable and they are continuing to do a great job to weave in those manner components. And continue to assign asynchronous work for them to practice as well too, in their, their, their reading and their speaking and their, their writing of their characters. So they've done a really nice job.
Trustee Anderson, can you restate your question? You had a question about attendance with.
Yeah. So I was wondering, well, I was wondering how many students are in that sale program and the approach for that? How many, how many are there? What that outreach looked like to families? Cause my understanding is you're doing it on campus, right? It's small group and it's not.
No, no, like, like the other schools in our zone, our hourly teachers are working with our students on Zoom during the time they're not in person to supplement.
Oh, okay. That, well, that's clarifying right there. I thought that you were doing, you, you were the only one that was doing small group. Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Drake, would you like to move us along?
Yes, again, thank you very much, Costa Mesa Zone for all of your effort. Thank you. We're going to transition from Costa Mesa Zone to the Corona del Mar Zone. So we'll wait for a few seconds to look around the Mar Zone, turn on their cameras. Looks like they are all there. Remember, I'm going to ask you principals to pass off to one another and we're going to start with Anderson and Tiffany Lewis.
Good morning trustees. Thank you very much for inviting us to speak. Like several of my colleagues, this is my first year at my site, Anderson Elementary. And what I have come to learn and appreciate is its amazing community and its staff. We are a very tight knit communicated, community. They are dedicated to students and to the success of the school. I hear over and over again that people buy in the port streets because of Anderson and it's very, it has become very evident why that is. It is a very special place. The staff is exceptional. They are working harder than they're, they've ever worked before. And when I say staff, I mean all staff, I mean classified and certificated. They are reaching students at their home when we've asked them to quarantine. They are reaching out via Zoom and they are making the most of all of those two and a half hours where they do get to be in person with their students. And I want to also recognize and appreciate the work that our parents do. We've certainly put them. We've asked them to partner more than we ever have and they are really stepping up. They are making sure that their students are receiving their, when they're, when they're off cohort times, they're really making sure that they're receiving and completing their work. You are asking how our students are doing academically in the core subjects. Anderson is doing really well. If you look at the data, we're right on par to where we normally are. We've seen some great growth. And I was just talking with my kinder team right before the break and they are a complete unit ahead in math. And that is, you know, when we talk about why that is, it's, we're looking at two and a half hours of uninterrupted instruction in a small group setting. Something that we have not had that opportunity to have in years past, and we are definitely feeling its impact. But our students are missing out on all of those other pieces that make a school, a school, those experiences of going to the library and having someone help you pick out a book of the art master's lessons and the hand, the hands-on science and, and those experiences on the playground where that social emotional growth really gets to, to, they get to be involved with their peers and, and test their limits and, and all that growth that happens on the playground is really, we're missing out on those opportunities. And here at Anderson, we're really missing out on our enrichment opportunities. We talk a lot about differentiation and our support of our struggling students is certainly important and appropriate to talk about. But it's also important that we talk about extending and challenging our students and giving them their opportunities to reach their full, full potential. And we're missing that here at Anderson. Again, our, our teachers are doing a great job, but in that limited time, we're just not able to provide a lot of those opportunities. My biggest concern right now is the number of families leaving for private. I have a handful of students in the cloud and another handful of, you know, students that have just moved out of the area. But predominantly the number of families, the large number of families that have left have gone to private schools that are offering full day. I've had a lot of heartfelt conversations with families. They do not want to leave Anderson, but they feel they need to leave in this climate and offer their students a full day with those enrichment opportunities. Their parents are really concerned about mental health. As a staff, we're definitely concerned about it as well. We are missing those opportunities to connect with our students, to hold them after, after school for a few minutes and talk to them or to walk around the playground with them and really give them that one-on-one time when you see they're struggling. We are very thankful and appreciative of the district's focus on mental health and the support of the sale team has been a real welcome addition. Again, we're, we're really trying to work with our community here. We've formed a PR committee at our, at our campus and just really trying to connect with our parents and what is it they're looking for? What is it they need? And just trying to reach out and making sure that we're, we're supporting one another in all of this. It is a real neighborhood school. And when we, you know, when you receive a request to fill out a a letter of recommendation for a student, teachers and the staff, they take it really personally. It, it hits them hard there. They're very dedicated to this school. And we want to see it thrive and succeed. Really just want to say thank you again for the opportunity. You know, we have wonderful things to share. We also have real concerns. I know that working together, we can figure a path forward. I think it's going to take, relooking at the school day and some courageous decisions, but I, I know that we can do it. Thank you again. And I pass it off to Cheryl Beck over at East Bluff.
Good morning trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to share about East Bluff School. This is my 14th year at East Bluff and I'm so proud to be a part of this amazing community of learners that encompasses our students, our staff and our parents. And I too am very proud of all of them. This has been a very difficult year in the pandemic and we've conquered things that we never thought that we would ever imagine. And I'm very grateful and proud of my dedicated staff. They work so hard. They've shown their flexibility in the growth mindset. They've collaborated beyond their normal high collaboration. They care deeply about each other and their students and their success. They have a strong commitment to the whole child, both the academic and the social emotional. And I'm very grateful for everything that they've done. I'm also very proud of all the safety practices and protocols we put in place to keep everyone safe and healthy and at school, and that is going very well. I'm very grateful for our parents who I know it's very difficult whether you're at work, at work or work at home and supporting your child in that asynchronous work time. And I, I talk all the time about how it's a partnership together. And boy, this year it has been a doozy. And thank you, parents. You're asking how are things going at East Love? Our students are showing resiliency and they are happy coming to school. And when I play music in the morning, they're skipping and those kindergartners are running in. They have joy on their face and the teachers are thrilled that they're with them for the two and a half hours. I've, I'm going to echo a lot of things you've heard about success. That two and a half hour of the hybrid of having the students for live instruction is paramount. And we're seeing things continuing, continuing the focused rigorous instruction, really honing in on prioritized standards, bridges, prioritized lessons, the small group instruction, differentiated instruction is a strength at East Bluff. And now we have half the students and they're still differentiating, whether they're seeding them in clusters so that they can focus on those groups. They know where their students are at academically. They really have a quality in-person instructional program and then that extended learning in the asynchronous time. And we're really working on high student engagement at school. And when I'm walking through classrooms, I see students actively engaged in learning, in explaining their thinking, in solving math problems, various ways and explaining their thinking. Core curriculum, literature circles, Socratic dialogues, gate strategies being implemented, implemented. So seeing a lot of great things. Some of the things that we've heard and I'll echo my colleagues to make sure we ensure all the, the extras are in the, the asynchronous time of the exciting writing and technology as it is at its finest through our Google platforms. The teachers can go into the writing when students are at home through a Google classroom and comment and support them in the writing process and at school. So we have a three-tier intervention process. But before I talk about that, I just want to hone in really quick on our PBIS systems. The social emotional piece is really critical. Our students are missing the connections. I, I tell you, the first day when kids came back live, we had zero criers in kindergarten. They were so excited to see their teacher that they already had made that connection with online and got to be with. I'm missing my high fives in the morning. So we do it up, up high and smile and dance to music and connect in the morning. But our PBS systems looks at our students' needs and we meet monthly and we go over data. We have check-in and checkout, invisible mentors. We are very much utilizing our sale team member Gabriella Quazada, who is part of our PBS team. She's provided staff development several times for our staff for the resources and I'm giving the resources to our parents as well. Lastly, our RTI process is alive and well, our three-tiered program, how you heard from our colleagues. And I have three part-time RTI teachers, approximately 20 students that we've identified that are below grade level. And we check in on every six to eight weeks on assessments. And we assessed our students at the beginning of the year and monthly and ongoing through our DIBELS, through our STAR IRL and informal assessment. So we know where our students are and we're addressing the needs in live time. We're not waiting for some magic summer school and I don't mean to, I don't mean to sound ill about summer school, but we're not waiting for that. So we're working hard on our student needs now. Again, I echo Tiffany's concerns. Our enrollment's down. I'm down about 100 students, 25% of, then these are estimates. About 25% moved, about 25% are in the cloud and then 50 went to private school. Myself and our staff care deeply about our students and families and do not want to see them leave. But we can't compete with the private school full day. And my parents are just loudly wanting full-time school, just for the board to know. And I know you've heard some, from some of the parents. We're missing enrichment too. The hands-on science, the music instruments, the students are so passionate about. By now, the third grade have those recorders in their hands and they're learning what winds instruments are, our art and STEM and primary PE. So playground friendships, those things we miss. But at East Bluff, we are really working hard to address our students and our staff is doing a phenomenal job. And I really thank you for the opportunity to share. And at this time, I would like to introduce my colleague, Gabe Del Real from Harborview. Thank you.
Good morning trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about Harborview Elementary. It is such an honor to work at a school site, to spend every day with students and staff at the point of learning is a responsibility I take quite seriously. I must begin by expressing my complete admiration for the work teachers have done in the past 12 months. Over the course of the COVID pandemic, teachers have tabled the challenges in their own lives, retooled their professional practices, reset again for distance learning in the fall, and then immediately began doubling up on their planning for the hybrid model. Throughout this turmoil, the consistent component was a desire to provide students with excellence. The staff feels a collective responsibility to make Harborview the school of choice for our community. And they are saddened when families choose a different school. In the past summer, as I met individually with staff members, I asked each one, what brings In the past summer, as I met individually with staff members, I asked each one, what brings you joy at Harborview? And two consistent responses emerged. The staff is a family and the students make me happy. As the newcomer to the school myself, I am honored to join this Harborview family, a close-knit group of people who care about one another, support each other and operate in an environment based on trust. Our common purpose this year has been to minimize the impact of the COVID, of COVID on the learning for our students, the learning that is grounded in the grade level standards. The data show that our efforts are working. We see that COVID has been a disruption, not a derailment. Our assessment data from fall shows fewer students started the school year at benchmark compared to previous school years. This is exactly what we would expect, given the fact that we were doing school in unconventional ways. The demands on teachers, parents and students were enormous and all resulted in an approximation of what we have always known school to be. Of course, there was a disruption, but now we see that even a pandemic did not derail student learning. Just before break, at student dismissal, a parent stopped in the car line, rolled down her window and told one of our hourly support teachers what a difference her Zoom SIPs lessons are making and helping her first grade child develop as an independent reader. Yes, COVID was a disruption, but we are more resilient than that. And in five months of hybrid instruction, we are returning to previous levels of students meeting grade level expectations. As the world is starting to see a potential recovery from this pandemic, we see clear evidence that our students are recovering too. This is because we know the fastest way to bring students up to grade level expectations is to immerse them in grade level work. It is with profound appreciation of the efforts of staff, students and families at Harborview that I share with you today. This pandemic has been a disruption, not a derailment. This is exactly what I would expect in a school where the staff sees each other as family and each and every student as a source of joy. With that, I want to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. D'Amico at Lincoln.
Good morning, trustees. Thank you so much for having me here today. It is such an honor to be able to talk about Lincoln Elementary, which I just find to be a gem inside of Corona Del Mar and I'm so thrilled to be a part of. I want to start by, you know, putting out there just how hard not only our teachers have been working, but our entire staff in order to create a safe environment for our students, to make our families feel safe sending their students to school in person each day, for guiding our parents through navigating the 14 different Zoom codes that come home to be able to access all of the asynchronous opportunities that are out there. It has truly been an amazing community effort. Our families have been right there with us every step of the way, supporting their students, talking with us and really being transparent with the challenges that they're facing. And it's really helped us to be able to then better meet the needs of our students and those families. So from staff to community, I cannot thank everyone enough for really coming together, which is kind of a challenge for a campus like mine that is not a neighborhood school. We feed into eight different neighborhoods and those eight neighborhoods are not necessarily connected by any kind of a common thread. So to have this community coming together the way that it has over the course of this pandemic has just been amazing to watch. There are challenges. There are most definitely challenges and our kids didn't come in this fall meeting the same kinds of benchmarks that they may have met in the past. But there are a lot of bright spots. There are a lot of things that we are doing right as, as an entire district, things that I think we have really gotten right this year. And, you know, as much as we all want kids to be here 100% of the time, that wasn't our reality when we opened up. And it isn't our reality right now. However, I can tell you that two and a half hours of uninterrupted instruction, I mean, minus maybe a fire drill here and there, those two and a half hours don't get touched by anything. And it is really powerful what a teacher can accomplish, especially with a small group of kids in that two and a half hours. My teachers and I have started meeting, I meet with every grade level twice a month and our meetings are supposed to be 15, 20-minute check-ins. They usually go more like, more like 30 to 45 because they just have so much that they want to share about, you know, what's happening in their classrooms and about the data. But one thing I keep hearing over and over again is Kristin, I get to hear every kid read every single day. There is not a day goes by that they are not hearing their kids read something, whether it's in front of the class or to the teacher, because they have the ability to do that in this setting. They're finding out where, where, where the holes are in math. They're finding out where the gaps are in, in the learning that, you know, maybe weren't even from the pandemic, but previous years, you know, before we even got into that pandemic world. Our teachers know our kids better than ever before. And I, I have to attribute it to the solid two and a half hours and that small group instruction that the kids are getting. It really is powerful. And I also have to say that, you know, for us at Lincoln, it has been such a huge gift to receive the hourly support teachers funded, you know, through LCFF funding. We also have our PTA who has supported us in giving us an hourly support teacher. So for the first time in my time at Lincoln, I'm operating with three hourly support teachers for my campus. And they are able to offer really targeted intervention to our students in an asynchronous format. And absolutely getting kids to log into that has been a challenge. But my teachers have been amazing. I have hourly support teachers that will pick up the phone and call home and say so-and-so's supposed to be on with me right now. And the kid, you know, quick, oh my gosh, I forgot it was my time. And they're logging in. And I have a third grade class that the teacher gave them an incentive that, that they all did all of their asynchronous work and they all logged into their asynchronous, or sorry, to their synchronous Zoom sessions that they were going to have a guest at a fun Zoom on Friday. And little did they know, it was me coming in there trying to guess the superheroes that were part of that Zoom session on the, on the cahoot. So our teachers are really getting creative to meet the needs of our kids and to keep them engaged. And our kids are growing. They're making tremendous growth. We're in the middle of giving DIBELS right now and I already had a kindergarten teacher skip in here, followed by a second grade one showing me how amazing their data is looking. So we really are seeing growth and I could not be more proud of this community for coming together. I also have to say that having our sale team member Gabriella as a part of our team has been instrumental to providing students with the social emotional support that they need. From grief counseling to just giving them that person to connect with for that extra motivation. She has been phenomenal and been working with, directly with our teachers to support students inside the classroom as well as outside and also offering our parents and some of those community resources that they may not otherwise know exist. So that has been a huge benefit for us as well. But I think, you know, for us at Lincoln, this has really pulled us together as a team. My teachers are talking about data. They're looking at data. They're really strategizing, how can we better meet the needs of our kiddos? And we're seeing growth as a result. So I could not be more proud of the work that's happening. We definitely are missing our arts and our technology and our in-person PE. Those pieces that really make school feel like a full day for our kids. So I definitely, you know, I'm looking forward to getting a lot of those pieces back. But I really hope as we layer on those, you know, pieces that make school feel like school, that we're really mindful of what worked this year and that we do our very best to protect that solid uninterrupted instruction that we have come to know this year because it's powerful. And I hope we can learn from that as we move forward. And with that, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Summer Harding over at Newport Coast.
Well, good morning, trustees. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I will wrap things up for the CDM Zone and much of what I'm going to say will be similar to what my colleagues have said, but it, it should be stated by all of us how much we appreciate our parents who have weathered immeasurable challenges and worry and anxiety and lack of sleep and still found ways to support the school. In our case, excuse me, something exciting has been our strong PBIS component here was missing our Coyote Store, which is where children would cash in their Howell cards for things that they might choose for having earned good behavior that month. And our parents found a way to create an online environment where the kids could order things, then individually wrapped every single item that they purchased and delivered them here for quarantine. So our parents are really just stepping it up and finding ways to put the fun back into school in any which way that they can. Of course, our teachers are doing exemplary work and are classified, to me, are classified are just heroes on campus. I, I could not get through a single school day without all of their help. But I also want to thank my Zone colleagues. I still consider myself very new at this school. I was only here a couple of months before everything COVID hit Newport Coast. So I relied heavily upon my principal colleagues and I know that we've all formed great friendships and found a huge sense of support with one another. So everyone's coming together to really create a team effort. When I think about the things that I feel good about right now, first and foremost, our safety protocols seem to be holding, which is an enormous relief. All the hard work that everyone in the district office put in to create these plans for us, they've been effective. We've had some positive cases, but we're not seeing any signs of school transmission, which when I say that to parents is a great source of relief for them. So that's something really positive to look at. I will say that the beginning of the year data showed that our students here really did come in meeting benchmark, which is a great testament to the fact that our distance learning model was working along with our parents. So I feel very grateful about that. As we look at mid-year data, for the most part, it's coming in very strong. There's a few little tweaks that we might make here or there, but nothing to be concerned about to any great degree. I will reiterate what every one of my colleagues has said to say that I attribute much of that that we are accomplishing here at school to this uninterrupted, small group academic learning block. In my 16 years as a principal, I've never had the opportunity to see what that might look like on a school campus. And to me, it's a complete game changer. So as we are looking for instructional models in the future, I know that we're going to be spending a lot of time trying to protect that kind of experience for the benefit of our kids. Some of my concerns really singularly are enrollment. I don't believe that any family has left NCE easily. I've had too many conversations with families as they really struggled to make a decision that supported the needs of their family, but I'm down about 150 students. So I spend a great deal of my time trying to look forward and thinking about ways that I might be able to attract those families back. I think a great deal of that effort is going to have to be looking at this concept of equity through the lens of the high achieving student as well. I have a significant number of students that are incredibly high achieving. Last year, I remember when we looked at the STAR data, I think I had over 25 students that had scored 100% in both the English Language Arts and the Math Assessment. I've never seen anything like that at a school. So it's really important as the instructional leader here for me to keep an eye on that enrichment portion. And I think that will be a big way that I might be able to attract some of those families back. I want to say thank you, like my colleagues have to the sale team. Incredible resource, something I've been wanting for more years than I can remember. Their work is both timely and effective. They support the classroom teacher. They support our families. Gabriella is a great addition to our staff meetings and it was just a tremendous resource that's been brought to schools this year. I always like to look forward rather than back. And I ask myself, what will I be able to identify that I learned through this challenging time that I'm experiencing? I will say that I've learned that teachers care so much about their students and that they will do whatever they can to meet the changing circumstances, as long as they're doing all that they can to meet students' needs. Once again, I can't say enough about classified. I think we need to relook at how important classified is to the overall functionality of a school site and make sure that we have all of that resource available to us because they're critical. And one thing I'm starting to think about is how will I support students when we do go back full-time to be able to manage the unstructured moments that they're really not used to at the moment. They've been living in a six-foot bubble. And it's going to be important that we look at PBIS through the lens of supporting students in the playground so that they don't get sort of knocked back by not being able to understand how to manage an unstructured moment. So hopefully I kind of added a little piece here or there to what my colleague shared, but we are all noticing that this instructional block is really, really important to us and a blessing that we've learned through all of these challenges. So with that, I think I'll pass it back to John.
Thank you all very much. It was very enlightening listening to all this. We have probably a little less than 10 minutes. Do people have questions? Trustee Wigan.
Thank you. You had, I guess this is kind of a question for every principal in this zone. What is your average class size that you're seeing on your campus?
Hi, I'll go first at Anderson. It varies. My upper grades are slightly larger. The cohort sizes range between 10 to 12. So overall class size of 24, 25. In my primary, they are significantly smaller with my kinder and first grade cohort sizes of about eight.
At Lincoln, we range from about 10 kids in a cohort up to 15 in the upper grades. So we definitely have smaller cohorts in our primary than in our upper as well.
And I would say at Eastbluff, we might have 10 in a AM or PM up to my largest is sixth grade has 28. So that would be 14 in the cohort. So.
Similar for me.
Yeah, Harborview, our largest class size is of 24 students. And our smallest class size is down to 11 students in one of our kindergarten classes. So that means that the cohort, we're seeing five in one and six in the other. And, but again, at 24, splitting those 12 and 12.
Combine certain classes. Did you guys have to combine certain classes where you had a second grade class that maybe only had 11 and another second grade class with 11? And you come, you combined that through the year or you kept them?
It's, the class sizes really reflect where we started the year with more students in our classrooms. And as we've all shared, you know, we feel it, it pains everybody on campus when a family leaves, but the same thing over and over again is shared with us that they need the opportunity for their child to be in school all day and they're looking for that elsewhere. So the class sizes being what they are now is a reflection of the families that have left during the year. Our classes were staffed with more students in them at the beginning of the school year.
I will add though, that some parents are reporting to us that when they made the decision, there's a varying range of how they're feeling about that decision now. Some of them are very happy in the new homes and some of them are finding some issues with where they landed. So it's going to be an unknown variable to determine what those families will do.
And I'll add that HR did a great job trying to figure out, you know, our student numbers and the appropriate staff. So I, I staffed this year two less than previous years. So, and I did lose a few students in the year, but more in the beginning. So we were staffed appropriately. And I think my smallest class, because of like Gabe said, of students leaving after school starting is at 15. That's my smallest.
Yeah. And I'll add too, that we've had, we've had quite a bit of fluctuation at Lincoln. It feels like, you know, we'll lose a couple that go to private school. And I walked in today to find out we have four kids waiting for their paperwork to clear at the Welcome Center to come in. So as, you know, as things are happening in different districts around us, I had a family move here from Long Beach Unified because they weren't in person. So we are seeing a bit of fluctuation in our enrollment over the course of the year as, you know, there's kind of an ebb and a flow to people leaving to new adventures and You know, there's kind of an ebb and a flow to people leaving to new adventures and people choosing Lincoln as their new adventure.
Yeah, and I think um something that we're similar at Anderson, um, the majority of families left over the summer. Um, I've had several leave, you know, trickle out throughout the year, but at this time, um, private schools are asking. For their um deposits and letters of application. And so we are um getting, having a lot of conversations with parents. That's. You know, what's the plan for the fall? Um, and so there there, we're starting to see. An uptick in in our families that are looking at more closely at private.
The message.
I wanted to, I think Summer, you mentioned that um equity of high achieving students as well. I'd be interested to see the data of. Those students that say they're at grade level or on meeting grade level, but in a normal year, they would be, you know, a year ahead or, you know, six months ahead. And so as we look at those kids, you know, they might not be behind grade level and such a concern. But they are not meeting their potential. Um, so that is a very uh concerning thing for me, especially in this zone and then in in other zones as well.
One thing I wanted to share is that a message that parents are really appreciating from me at the moment is what I shared that um. The safety protocols are holding and that we haven't seen any school-to-school transmission of COVID and they'd like to hear that. And also what all of my colleagues have shared about the instructional block. And how the quality of our instruction in those two and a half hours is so strong. Um, they're really, that's resonating very um clearly with many parents now.
Trustee Orsola.
Hi, thank you so much for those presentations. It's so great to learn about all the exciting things going on around the district. I have a question for um Ms. Lewis. You mentioned all of the enrichment opportunities that your students normally have access to that during this. Um, difficult time they have less access to. Can you run us through the kinds of enrichments that are offered at a school like Anderson?
Yeah, it's a variety. Um, so we do have um a strong uh foundation that's in addition to the um L C F F teachers funded by the district. Um, they fund several R T I teachers. And historically, they've been utilized more in enrichment opportunities where they were able to um pull a small group of. You know, students to work on some uh maybe a novel study or some some math challenging opportunities and. Um, this year and then in addition, um, but this year they're, they're really being utilized in that off-court time to run. More check-ins with students or to do some some writing or or more extend the curriculum for everyone and not necessarily. Um, ca- catered at looking at at a specific um or a more select group. Um, we're trying to make sure that all students are connected in that off-cohort time. Um, other opportunities that um our foundation has provided, we have a maker space, we have a broadcast room, we had a Spanish teacher, so we had. A different variety of opportunities that were available to students.
Thank you. That's great. And I had one last question for um Dr. D'Amico. You mentioned that there are hourly support teachers that you're in, you mentioned, so it's your P T A that funds that or your foundation or both or? How is that funded?
So my P T A this year was able to fund one of those R T I positions for me and then the district um through L C F F funding was able to give us two. Um, so having that second one from the district has made a huge difference for us in being able to meet the needs of our kids across the grade levels.
And are those each full-time positions or part-time or?
They're part-time, so they're, yeah, each one is nineteen and a half hours.
Yeah, oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have so many questions for everybody and we have to say on somewhat of a schedule because we have so many other people coming in. We may have more questions for, should, should we, should trustees direct them to you?
We'll get them out.
Okay, all right. Thank you all very much and. Everybody staying on to listen so we can thank all of them at one time at the end.
Are they staying on?
Are they staying on?
Yes, all the principals will stay on for sure.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Corona Mars. I appreciate your time. We're going to move on to the Newport Harbor Zone and we're going to start with Kaiser Elementary and Dr. Granger.
I hope you're able to hear me. I've been getting, I've been, I've been experiencing some of the challenges. Of t- of school in a pandemic lately and that has included. Technology challenges. Um, anyway, I do want to share that. This year has been like a story that I read called West with Giraffes. And in this book, there are these giraffes that arrive in the harbor in New York and they've got to be transported in nineteen thirty-eight from New York. To the San Diego Zoo, historical fiction, great story. It's a wild ride. It reveals the strengths and the challenges of the individuals involved and. It has a happy ending. And so I am looking forward to us having a really strong and happy ending when we are finished with our wild ride. Um, I have to echo what my colleagues have shared that. This has been a big push and it has, it is a tribute to the many people who have stepped up. Whether it was the heavy lift at the beginning of the year to get materials out to students. Uh, Chromebooks that involved staff members on site as well as our I T and Ed Tech Departments. Uh, we have an L M T, a library media technician on our site. Who does these weekly read alouds with students and she pushes out stories to them along with art projects that they can do. So there are all kinds of lovely little things that are going on and at the same time, we're aware of issues with academics. We started our year behind and we are using Star Reading and Star Math Data to kind of track the progress of our students. And they are making progress, but I'm seeing the Peter Principle at work, at least that's what I suspect it is where. The students who came in ahead are continuing to br- to progress really well and the ones who come in behind. Who have issues at home, don't have the support to get that asynchronous work done on their own, they are really struggling. And so see this bifurcation among our population in our school. Uh, some of our great successes have already been mentioned. The sale team with the um social emotional support for students. Has been phenomenal and we have weekly meetings with them to discuss student progress. We also have a strong student progress team on our campus and so we have a group that includes our school psychologist and others. They get together weekly to discuss student concerns so we can stay on top of it. We have had, we have great supports in place with two district provided L C F F funded uh reading intervention teachers. We have a great special ed staff. And we're using resources like Freckle and Khan Math and our Khan Academy Math. We've put together a crew of high school tutors from Newport Harbor High School and. We're just starting our um Cal State Fullerton tutoring program. With our students focusing on math and that's the area that we've noticed the the biggest concerns with. Some of the challenges we're facing homelessness, um, trying to balance. Oh, that tells me my time is almost up. Balancing accountability. For example, Wednesday attendance seems to be a challenge. Trying to balance accountability with grace because we know that parents are struggling. With all the wacky schedules that are going on. Uh, I mentioned equity. There's fear about COVID among staff members as well as among families that's affecting all of us. But we also have had some great successes with getting supports in place and also on maintaining as much normalcy as we can. So we have an active student council and I know our, my colleagues have mentioned theirs. Our students are doing our daily announcements. We figured out a safe way to do that, so they're up here doing that daily. We've had a strong focus on giving this year. So uh, we sadly had a crossing guard who passed away at the beginning of the year. She loved cats. So we had a kitty products drive and we took about. A thousand pounds worth of kitty litter and other things to a local shelter. In the beginning of the year and that has just continued with food drives and clothing drives and gift card drives and. All kinds of things like that. So students and families stay connected to the school. And we have an ama- an amazing P F O and a great foundation, both of which are making sure that. Things like Art Masters and our engineering projects continue. And now I would like to pass the baton to my colleague Matt Brazemley. Who's going to continue the story for the Newport Harbor Zone. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb, and good morning, trustees. Uh, we too have seen our share of successes and challenges during this time and it's just the start. I'd like to highlight. The success of our classroom teachers as others have, um, given the shortened time in person. Um, putting an emphasis on best first instruction with language arts and math. Uh, able to provide support to those smaller groups of students, providing intervention where needed and celebrating student successes. We also made sure to put an emphasis on connection. You know, connecting with students to support their mental health, meet them where they are and do all we can to meet their needs. Uh, in terms of how they're doing academically, um assessments that we use for our reading benchmark data do show that. Our overall proficiency does closely align to historical aspect data. Uh, for those students that have regressed and are working below grade level, they're in need of additional support. We have an incredible intervention team that we built about four and a half years ago, uh, now consists of five hourly support teachers that targets. Um, support for those students four times a week. And that ultimate goal of getting them back to grade level and exited from intervention so that we can get more students in and and receive services as well. On top of that, we have five instructional aids that also provide additional intervention to our students in need. We knew that it was important as a, as a staff and as a school to try to keep things as normal as possible and keep things in place that we've had in the past. And so in terms of school climate and culture, continuing to offer. Our students, student government and lead leadership opportunities where they can guide us through school spirit days and weekly flag decks. Um, also putting a re- uh importance on character recognition and and recognizing students with monthly pride awards. Um, for challenges, you know, I'll highlight a few and a lot of them have already been um stated by my colleagues, but. There is definitely the heightened level of stress for all, for students and families and staff members and just respecting and. That the, everyone's trying to balance both personal and professional lives. Also understanding that our families are handling this all in different ways and all of them are trying to do the best that they can for their kids. Some of our students are showing that they have a lack of motivation, which mainly impacts for us work completion. And getting them to work at their highest level, but for us, it also brings to light the importance of our teachers making connections with those students so that we can meet them where they are. My biggest concern honestly is students' mental health. Uh, more and more students are battling anxiety and high levels of stress at really young ages. Uh, teachers and parents are communicating these mental health concerns to us and we're doing all we can to connect with those students. Um, really still concerned about students that are silently struggling. They appear to be going through the day and that everything is fine. Um, but really they're not and I'm really trying to find those students and make sure that we can support them. I'm incredibly grateful to have an awesome mental health and support team. They combine with our classroom teacher, our school psychologist, the sale team member and our spec- special education staff. They work together. We develop a plan and do all we can to support students and 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 provide the support we can, not only to the student, but. The reassurance to the parents to know that when they drop their kid off at school, they're not helpless and there is a team of individuals here that really care about their kid and are going to take care of them. I'll also echo the concerns of some of my colleagues about the loss of students to other schools. We've seen over thirty percent of our students leave from last year to this year. Um, and again, they're not easy decisions for our families. Again, they're just trying to to find what's best for their students, which I a hundred percent respect. Um, it's impacted our students that are still here. They've seen their friends move on and it affects them mentally. Um, I'm hopeful that we will get them to return soon though. Um, in closing, I just want to recognize our teachers and our support staff. They create a warm and welcoming environment every single day. They creatively work to engage and motivate our students. And they're doing all they can to make connections and provide great care to our kids. And with that, I will now introduce my colleague, uh, Principal of Newport L, Amanda Estrada.
Thank you, Matt. Um, thank you for this opportunity, trustees. I thought a lot about what I could say in this short amount of time. Uh, to really paint a picture of how students are truly doing at Newport L. This whole experience has been challenging for students, for families and staff. But because it's a shared experience, we've been able to help each other through it with more empathy and understanding. Um, we are experiencing the same challenges that many of my colleagues have mentioned. Uh, the attendance issues, engagement in asynchronous work. And like many have mentioned, the lost enrollment. Uh, but the people who are here are happy to be here and they're partnering with us. And uh, really the bright spots through all of this have been the people in our community. And I have to commend our staff and our teachers for their incredible dedication and their tireless efforts to making this. The best experience that we can. In regards to academics, we are seeing a lot of success. Uh, teachers are maximizing the in-person time, concentrating on E L A and math. And really strategically incorporating other subjects in meaningful ways into the students' asynchronous time. They're also taking advantage of the smaller cohort sizes. Many teachers have noted that students are making more progress um than ever in writing, especially because they do have such small numbers that they can conference with students about their writing. And provide immediate feedback so much more often. Um, students may be in the classroom half the typical time, but they are receiving twice as much attention as what they usually would. Um, as several colleagues have mentioned, um, the work completion of asynchronous work is a challenge, but teachers are getting very inventive with motivating and incentivizing students. And trying to make that asynchronous um work meaningful and communicating to importance, um, how important it is to the parents. Um. The reading data that we're seeing from our mid-year benchmarks um is really promising. Um, of course, we are seeing students that are not reading at grade level, but it's pretty much as expected in years past. It's our our usual number of students. Um, there's always work to be done. We've had a robust R T I system for many years and we're very fortunate to be able to continue that. Of course, it looks different. With uh it being provided over Zoom, but we have four hourly support teachers. Meeting with students uh four days a week, really targeting reading foundational skills and then we're able to grow that as students um make progress. And it's incredible that these students who need that extra bit of support uh also have another caring adult on campus that they can connect with. Um, overall, I've been so impressed with our students' resilience. They have adapted to the schedule changes, to new safety protocols. And having to be so much more independent and tech savvy during their at-home learning time. That's not to say that it hasn't been challenging. I know that it has been uh for certain students and families uh having to adapt like this. Uh, but just like we support our students with academics, we have a support team. For students' mental health and social emotional well-being and like many have mentioned, the sale team has been incredible. Uh, the Student Services Department in general, all of that team has worked so hard to provide resources. To our teachers and to our parents and really tiered levels of support. Um, all the way to one-on-one counseling with students via Zoom, uh, and that really has been a game changer and I just am so. Glad that we are recognizing that addressing students' social emotional well-being is just as important as addressing their academics. When I thought about priorities for this school year and what my community really needed, connection and communication were among the top. Um, relationships are always important, but I knew that after spending so much time apart. And all the safety protocols for distancing and campuses being closed to parents, we would need to find new ways to connect and communicate. And I wanted this year to feel as normal as possible for students and for them to be able to remember it for something other than COVID. So we've continued with our tradition of flag decks as student leadership and I make videos instead. We celebrate students with awards and I make great news calls to parents. Um, I send out virtual newsletters to parents and use social media to highlight what's happening on campus. And we've continued to have fun events like um a virtual game night and kindness challenge week. And I really feel like this emphasis on making connections and maintaining relationships has helped with our school culture and morale. And students are engaged and motivated. They're happy to be here. And parents are partnering with us to make the most out of this unique school year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Terry Clark, Principal at Newport Heights.
Good morning, trustees. Uh, it's an honor to be representing Newport Heights this morning. In my second year as a principal here, I've spent more time leading during a pandemic and distance learning and hybrid learning than what we would consider normal. Um, and like many of my colleagues, I I can't say enough about the teachers and our support, classified, all of our staff. They really truly are the heroes here. I've never seen our teachers collaborate more, work harder. And and most importantly, find and celebrate all the small successes that we're seeing. They are working to create a warm and welcoming environment, everything from. everything from that first day where our students stepped onto campus and everyone was applauding to the elbow bumps that our teachers and our staff are giving as students are exiting the school, just finding all of those opportunities to connect, like so many of my colleagues have talked about. They're also really working creatively to engage our students and motivate our students. We're seeing similar challenges with the asynchronous work and some of the attendance. One of my teachers, first-grade teachers, sweet, sweet, has just such a great reputation in our community, and she promised our first graders that if they did their asynchronous work, she would do a cartwheel for them. So you better believe that those students were working really, really hard because they just wanted to see their sweet teacher do a cartwheel just for them. And like Amanda was saying, as well as all of my colleagues, we're really focusing on making those connections and providing care for all of our students. One thing that our staff has recently done is, you know, we have our school motto, which is "Students Achieve Great Heights," but we've created our own personal motto as a staff, and it's "Inspire, Encourage, and Make a Difference." And that's what we're using to guide all of our decisions and being really thoughtful in what we're doing and moving forward. And I can't miss the opportunity to give a shout out to all of our students. They are so resilient. They are joyful, and they really have pride in Newport Heights right now. Even though they are going through this pandemic and seeing a lot of challenges, they are just doing everything that they can to be committed to their schoolwork and their connections. Many of you know Newport Heights is as diverse as Newport Mesa as a whole, so we continue to make thoughtful decisions in nearly every area to support and to celebrate our students in the way that feels just right and just unique for each student and family. As far as academics in person, we are maximizing the two and a half hours that we have in person with the students and the teachers. It is powerful. It is focused. We are having a strong emphasis on the English language arts and math with having the opportunity to throw in those bits and pieces of social science, science, art through the asynchronous work as well as through the bigger projects. Teachers are strategizing how to best support students by looking at the data. They are meeting weekly. As a principal, I'm doing my best to meet with them weekly or bi-weekly to help support in areas, and we're really looking at the needs and our resources and matching those together. One anecdote that I wanted to share that many of my teachers have shared with me is that the power in providing support in students through small groups is huge. But one thing in particular is we're hearing that students are hearing their names multiple times a day, and that is very, it's different. So in a typical year, when you have maybe 25 students, a student may only hear their name one or two times a day. But when you're in a cohort of 10 students, you are constantly hearing your name, and that is really, really powerful for young students because they know that they are being seen, they are being recognized, and they're being heard. The other thing that I wanted to share, looking at data, is we are seeing Newport Heights trend in the same direction that we've seen in years past. So in looking at our mid-year data in Acadian's reading, we are seeing anywhere from 1% to a 3% difference between last year and this year. Many of those students, looking at the same cohort, many of those students have even grown. So we're really excited to see that that time that we are being thoughtful in our instruction in the classroom is really paying off. In addition to that, historically, Newport Heights has had about 25% of our students that we've been able to provide support and intervention to. This year, we have our biggest intervention team that we've ever had. We have five hourly support teachers who are part-time to our LCFF-funded, and we also have four instructional assistants who are part-time, one which is funded through the district, and it's targeted support. At the beginning of the year, we identified about 35% of our students needing academic support, and currently, we are able to provide 30% of our students that academic support. So that's really great to see. About 5% of those students have been able to transition back to what is working for them in the classroom without that intervention and support. We're really matching our resources to the identified student need, both academically and socially emotionally. Currently, we have an increased focus on early literacy and foundational skills in K through 2. We are seeing particularly our kindergarten students and our first-grade students not having that access with manipulation like they have in the past. We are seeing that that is a challenge, particularly if they don't have the support at home. So we're really doing everything we can here in person to support those early literacy skills. Like many of my colleagues have said, our biggest successes and the commitments we've made are around our school climate and culture, and we are doing everything we can to have a major focus on finding the joy in typical elementary school. So we have our weekly flag decks. We have our sharp pride character recognitions. We do T-shirt Tuesday where we're celebrating positivity, Spiritware Fridays, monthly awards, our newsletters. Everything that we did before, we're able to shift and find different ways to focus, whether it's virtual, whether it's socially distanced. And I really see that this is helping our community come together. We are a very diverse community, like I shared. And this here at school is helping the community come together from supporting those who don't have the support at home, as well as celebrating those who can support. We also have great support from our PTA and foundation, which we are very lucky, and there is a shared focus on students, which is incredibly important. Lastly, I just want to share, you know, challenges that many of my other colleagues in schools are facing is the declining enrollment. We had about a third of our students either go to cloud campus, move out of the district or state, or go to private school, and that is significantly changing the demographics here at Newport Heights. And then lastly, I just want to say we're so, so grateful for all of the support that the district has provided, particularly in terms of the sale team and all of the extra support. I know Summer Harding at Coast recognized the support of our classified staff, and I really want to echo that sentiment that we could not run this school day without all of these different staff members supporting each and every component of our school day. We would not be able to run as successfully without any of them. So thank you. And with that, I am going to pass it over to Dr. Akuna over at Whittier Elementary School.
Thank you, Teri. Good morning, trustees. It's a great pleasure that I get to share with you some information about Whittier Elementary. As you are all aware, Whittier Elementary School is a dual immersion site. Keeping this in place with fidelity has not been easy through our virtual learning. But our dedication to the program and the dedication the teachers have to the dual program helps us move forward and continue to strive in a positive direction. Students that are currently enrolled in our dual immersion program continue to receive their 50% English and 50% Spanish instruction throughout the day or the week. At Whittier, we have made steady progress in growth, not only in our dual immersion program, but in different areas, learning, in different learning areas and students' social emotional needs. And like my colleagues, the growth that we are currently seeing has much to do with the contributions of our teachers, definitely our classified staff, and our support staff. I would like to share with you some of the things that we have in place here at Whittier. In the area of reading, we too are lucky. We have a robust reading team. We have seven part-time hourly reading teachers. We have one full-time bilingual intervention specialist, and we have three instructional aids. This amazing team services a large group of our students, our strategic students in the area of reading fluency and reading comprehension. They service our students four days a week virtually, and they make those connections to ensure they're getting that extra support. Out of our current 420 students, they are servicing 150 of our students across grade levels. We are so lucky to have four of these teachers that speak Spanish fluency. I've known, I've come to see, being here at Whittier, that being able to make the connections with the families and students is very important. So speaking Spanish to them is very critical. Here at Whittier, we also have the Literacy Project. We are very fortunate to get a recommendation by one of our board members, Michelle Bardo. Thank you. The foundation that she referred us to is Newport Beach Foundation. This foundation is currently funding our literacy project at Whittier, where they are virtually servicing our second and third grade students that are struggling with reading foundations. We also have our Girls Inc. Literacy Lab. This group offers weekly virtual reading support for female students in grades K through 3. All reading level students are welcomed. Our young Whittier girls get to sign up and read books with Girls Inc. and develop not only their reading fluency, but also their self-esteem. In the area of math, we're lucky. We have Project Kid Connect. The Project Kid Connect is going to be connecting with over 100 of our upper-grade students to support them in the area of math. It will be supporting our Whittier Dolphins with math foundational skills, computation, and word problems. Similar to my colleagues, in the area of social emotional needs, we are continuing with our PBIS system that is motivating our students and reminding them of their success. At Whittier, we also have a behavior specialist that is on our campus once a week. We have a counselor here, intern school counselor that is here two days a week. We also have Olive Crest, our outside counseling agents, supporting our parents with parenting classes. We also have the sale team from the district that is very appreciated that we have been using for teachers and families to support them. Overall, I'm going to say one of the greatest successes has to do with their school community facilitator. She's been at Whittier for over 10 years, and she has a great relationship with many of the families. I've been working with her to get to know the parents and the families and the students to understand their needs and build a relationship. As far as challenges are, they're very similar to many of my colleagues. Attendance and connecting is a challenge for many of our families. The second challenge I found has much to do with staffing. I noticed that when teachers have to go on quarantine, we have to find the replacement. Or when classified staff are on quarantine, we have to make sure that we have someone there to cover. Another challenge I found is being a new principal at the site. It's really hard to build those wonderful relationships with students and families and teachers behind the mask or through Zoom. Although I'm faced with all of these challenges, I continue to work and try to build a school climate that will support our student success, even through this hybrid model. We continue to have our virtual flag decks as well, similar like my colleagues. We have our monthly award ceremonies for our students. We have Spirit Day with our T-shirts, competitions. I also have a monthly meeting with my parents, which is always full of parents as far as between 30 to 50 parents in the morning and in the evening to really reach out and understand what they need. They have asked us for several workshops that we have made every effort, me and the school community facilitator, to make sure we have available for them. This year has been a very different year, but it's been a year where we've been able to learn how to show grace and to overcome many of the challenges that cross our path. Now I'm going to pass it off to, last but not least, Dr. Amy Niggy.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. As my colleagues have shared, I too want to recognize the great staff, both the certificated and classified here at Woodland Elementary and our great community. Deb talked a little bit about that earlier, but they're very involved in caring and supportive, and we appreciate that. We here at Woodland have a very unique opportunity, and we work with only the younger students, so TK through second graders. Much of what we do in a primary classroom is interactive and playful. So of course, this time is challenging when we're telling the kids, "Stay six feet apart and wear a mask," right? But we've come up with some creative ways. We're the dragons at Woodland, so we spread our dragon wings, and that helps to remind us to stay a few, you know, feet apart. But when we are talking about the importance of foundational skills, and I know Teri talked a little bit about that just a few minutes ago, but the phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, that requires us as teachers to really listen intently, and so the challenges of listening through a mask and staying our distance and to guide students as they're learning and making those mistakes, we want to guide them. So the phonemes, the graphemes, the blending, the encoding, all those things, the hear, see, say, write. It's very dependent on talking and very dependent on teachers listening. So some of the things that we've done to overcome that, the teachers have now microphones. They look like little radio control microphones. And then also really depending on other ways that we help our students, not just through the auditory, but the visual supports. So coming back to our SIPs program and thinking about those visual supports that are important to be around the room when we have our sounds, like our huffing horse and batting the ball and our digging dog. Those are important things to make sure that we have up and around the room so that it's supporting our students other than just the auditory, but also those visual cues. Also, Ashley talked, asked Lori about, and I wanted to speak to, Lori doesn't have that, but we do have our, we're piloting for the district, a differentiated reading instruction, 30 minutes every day for our first and second grade students. And this is where everyone, during their 30-minute block, the teachers and our intervention staff are working prescriptively with a systematic approach, making sure that our students get that instruction. So through SIPs and through the wonders, but it is a 30-minute time for every student, and it's on campus. And that makes a big difference, especially for our primary students who really, you know, have a difficult time with the asynchronous connection. So that's been really great. When, oh, I was going to tell a little story too. Gabe shared a little story about his first grader, and I know we all have those stories, but we had a little first grader, and the mom was really frustrated, the child was frustrated, the teacher's frustrated. She was having a difficult time, and mom was having a difficult time supporting that reading at home. And so the little girl was like, "I can't read." I said, "You can read. You just don't have the right book." So putting and connecting the kids with the right materials and that extra support that she's now getting at school. And one of the things that, you know, I've shared with parents, we've talked about, is the importance of maintaining that parent-child relationship too, and knowing and helping a parent know, you know, they're taking on this role of teaching reading, right? They're supporting us in that, and that's challenging. And so know when to tap out, and we want you to maintain that important relationship with your children. So know when it's time to say, and give a call to the teacher, the parent, or the, me, the principal. You know, we can help you out. But what was exciting about this is now this little girl, she's got the right book, and she's super excited. And her mom called me over to the gate the other day and said, "Dr. Niggy, come over here." And she's tearful and excited. She said, "My daughter came home, and she's excited. She told me she's a reader." And so those things, getting them that time, that prescriptive time. You know, there are many things, as my colleagues have shared with you. While on campus, the small class size is a benefit, the focus on uninterrupted instruction, the quality, really helping the teachers to figure out what is appropriate for that asynchronous work and what should we be doing here on school site. You know, having our parents read to the kids at home is not too difficult of a task, but maybe having them teach those phonics skills is a little more challenging. So those are the things that we do on campus, so really being intentional about what we're teaching. And then as a primary campus, we want to make sure our students love coming to school, so hanging on to those things that help make it a fun campus. You know, my colleagues have shared with you lots of ways that we're doing that, and we too at Woodland are doing the same thing. We just brought back our wheel, a prize wheel, so we're doing that on our campus where we're spinning and having the kids, you know, supporting and reinforcing those character traits. And then, as Deb talked about, our foundation has been wonderful, and they've really helped to support that parent engagement. And one of the things that we did first was getting to know Woodland, and that was an opportunity for the staff to work together. And we presented to the parent group, and that was successful. We did our town hall meeting, and now we're building on that. And so in March, we're doing a reading training for parents, tips on how to support your child at home in reading. We're going to be doing something with the Harpers, who wrote Wooden's Pyramid of Success book, and we're going to be doing something with them in a in a parent engagement opportunity. We're going to do something with math in May and in June, we're going to do fun summer learning. So anyway, we, we definitely appreciate all the support that our PFO has and our foundation have given. So through Art Masters and STEM, they're still supporting that. We have had opportunities for, as I said, those parent engagement nights. And in closing, I just want to say that I believe that by working together to support our students, both in the academic and social emotional learning, we are ensuring that Woodland now remains a great place to learn. So with that, I'll hand it back over to John.
I also want to thank you. Unless a board member has a pressing question that we can't wait for to give to John.
Yeah, I can look up all that.
Okay, because we have one more zone and we're actually the time where we would have our secondary schools come in. So not, and please know all the principals here, we wanted you, the board wanted to listen to you. So we are really thrilled that you're here, giving reports, examples, anecdotes, positives, negatives from all your schools. It's really appreciated and we thank you for that. The lack of questions doesn't mean that we don't have a lot more to talk about, so.
But I have one over, I have one overarching question. I know you tried so hard. It's just for all the principals to be thinking, what can we do for you as a board? Be thinking of that. And if you've got something, send it to our board president or all of us. But what can we do to help you? That's something that hasn't come out yet and I wanted to.
Open schools more. Okay.
Make COVID go away, right?
And I just want to say thank you, Dr. Acuna. And I'm glad that got rolling and let me know maybe at the end of the year how that's working out. Thanks so much.
Okay, so we'll move on, John.
Yes, we will go ahead and move on to the Estancia Zone and I've already kind of communicated with them. But if we can make sure that we keep our presentations to three minutes, that would be great. Thank you. And I believe we're starting with Stacy DeBoome.
First of all, as everybody else has said, I want to make sure I say thank you to our amazing All-Star staff. We would not be where we are today without everybody's pitchin' and their help getting things rolling. The spring was a blur and I think the blur was just myself and our community facilitators. So I want to give hats off to Ilse, who is here with me almost on a daily basis handing out Chromebooks and materials to students along with some of our special ed aides. Daily, our staffs wear many hats, especially our classified staff. So I thank you to our classified staff who wear up to five hats some days. They are amazing. I feel very lucky when I ask for help, I don't get a no or not yet. I go, sure, I can help. What can I do? And so it's evident that our team cares and wants students on campus and is part of our team. I also want to recognize our amazing families who have been supportive of a new procedure, supporting teachers and their students, even though, as people have mentioned, they're going through many stresses at home. It's been truly a team effort and a partnership with our families and our community to make sure our school is open and we're running with smiles on our faces behind our masks. Some of our successes are safety and our procedures and our PPE has been a huge success. People feel safe and happy at school. Both students and staff tell me daily, we're happy to be here. We're glad we're in session. And so for that, I am thankful. As people have mentioned, that uninterrupted, we're here for 155 minutes for each cohort. And that gives our teachers time for meaningful instruction and opportunity for our students to explore their content and have have discussions with their friends. And the small cohorts allow teachers to get to know their students, communicate with their family and build a sense of community. And then on that Wednesdays, when they get to Zoom with the other half, they see all of their friends. So that's been very nice. Teachers have been amazing trying to find ways to integrate arts and science in their classroom. There are some challenges with the not able to do, pull a small group when needed. It's more keeping our distance. And also a lot of teachers put a ton of work into the asynchronous work and not all students are able to accomplish that at home. So we really do focus on our time here on campus. In this, in the fall, we did our Cadence data and we were able to place about 150 students in our star rotation groups. And so those are our TK through three foundational skills programs and then book clubs for upper, which focus on using wonder passages for fluency and wonders chapter books to build vocabulary and tie into the essential question each week. And so we're currently just finishing, we just finished our Cadence data. So we're going to be looking at that next week with our classroom teachers to talk about where we need to go from now till the next round at the end of the year. I'm excited to say Project Kids Connect started yesterday, so we'll have students in Zoom after school with the Project Kids Connect team. I also have used some of my Title One funds this year for teachers to do tutoring after school. So I have seven staff members who are doing small group tutoring after school. And that just started last week or the week before the break. And so that is getting up and running. I want to give a shout out to everybody who's involved in special day classrooms. We have six classes with special ed here on campus and we had a lot of hiccups in the beginning of the school year with staffing. But the attendance has been great for our students. Our staff is here. Candy and her team have done an amazing job filling positions where we've had holes, making sure that the autism specialists are over. We have other people here to support lots of floaters. And so at this point, fingers crossed, we're doing really well. And so also I want to say thank you to her team. Our library is now open. We are continuing, that was a highlight. We had kids, on one day she left on the bus, she goes, tomorrow I get my new books. And so our new librarian is checking out books via Destiny in their Chromebook. Students can request them on Tuesday and their books get delivered to their class on Thursday. And so I'm expecting our AR to go up and our students to continue that pleasure reading, which is so important. We continue with our PBIS and our awards. We have Spirit Week, All-Star Week, Pyramid of Success, and our Faculty Friday Awards. So trying to keep some things as normal as possible, even though things are very different. Overall, our ship is sailing and we continue to refine, adjust, and breathe, which is very important. We've learned as we support students, families, and each other. We, it's hard being a staff and sometimes not feeling so connected as we normally do. So trying to find ways to smile if it's in a Zoom and you're in a meeting, you take off your, you don't have your mask on because you're in your own room. You smile at everybody because we don't get to see those smiles in person at all times. So trying to find ways to make those connections. But I am thankful for each day for our entire school community. And if I could, I would give them a high five and a big hug. So I would like to pass it off to Ryan Longacre at California.
Thank you, Stacy. Good morning, trustees. Good morning, colleagues. I want to begin by thanking you so much for the opportunity. I have to note before I begin sharing just a little window onto what's happening at California. Just in the course of this conversation, I've written down seven or eight different great ideas that I've heard in the room. So just having this kind of conversation is powerful and much appreciated. So thank you. I'll just share a couple of similarities and highlights with California elementary as I think about where we are as a team. The fact that we are focusing and have been for quite some time, focusing on learning and the wellbeing, mental health and wellbeing of our students. If you think about the environment in which we opened our gates into this new adventure, to have that focus, two and a half hours of focus around core ELA and core math is a win for kids. And that is because, I'll echo my colleagues, because of the hard work of every single member of this staff, parent community, my PTA, my foundation. I couldn't be more thankful for all of the collaborative effort around that. So the win, of course, is that core instruction is happening. And that means that our students have access to complex text and grade level, challenging grade level material in a somewhat social setting. So they're having opportunities for conversations and they're able to see what it looks like to grapple with content. They're able to see that, that's visible and that's important. So the fact that we're providing that for our students is absolutely wonderful. It feels good. We are also, like my colleagues have mentioned, doing our very best as a team in collaboration with our PTA and foundation to provide those signposts that make, make school feel normal. We're able to shift and pivot with some great effort to keep some of those traditions alive at California, which is fantastic. We are benefiting from the work we started last year by refining. We started refining some of our tier one supports, our SST process. For example, we refined, I thought about how we could work more efficiently and collaboratively around any kind of question or that a student may be facing. So we're benefiting from that and we're continuing to, those things are still in place. Our intervention groups are in place and we are tapping into the human resources on our campus in ways we never have. And it's out of just necessity. We've had to get really creative, step out of our, our roles, so to speak, and just all hands on deck, get the job, job done. Challenges, of course, the learning environment is not optimal. So we've had to be very creative on how we maintain those, you know, after best first instruction and that tier one timely intervention that happens during the course of a lesson. It looks different and so we're seeing that impact. But our tier one interventions, as I said, are in place. It's just we're having to come in at it at a different angle. Attendance and engagement has been just a big challenge. We're making headway. But it has required, as I said, just creativity and from literally driving things to people's homes to tapping into the kindness of our team and getting, getting the job done has been a big challenge. But it's definitely been collaborative. So just given time, I'd like to pause there, pass things over to my colleague Cindy over at Pomona. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, trustees. And hopefully everyone can hear me because I think my AirPods might be dying. I apologize. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and share a little bit about our Pomona story. And I'll try not to be super repetitive. As you can imagine, with all of our schools, we are experiencing very similar things and our paths have been more similar than before. So March was definitely the beginning of an interesting path as a new principal and continuing to be in that path. And we have evolved in so many different ways so very quickly. And I know that I've heard and I've learned that there is no comfort in, there are no growth in comfort and no growth in comfort, or one of those phrases. But anyway, I don't think any of us have been in our comfort zone and we have grown tremendously. So I want to first say that my parents have grown in ways that I personally am so proud of. We are engaging ways we've never done before. They email me directly, which I'm so proud of. They connect with the schools right away when they need support. And so we're really empowering that we continue that connectivity with our families. My staff could not be more amazing. We have come every single day. I've been fortunate not to have similar staffing issues as other sites. Knock on wood. We have been here every single day. They do it with an absolute smile and just an enthusiasm for really trying to get our students connected. And that has been our huge, our huge goal and our, and our hopes is to make sure that our students are connected and when they're here, that they're here. And when they're home, that we can still figure out what, what are their needs are. So our biggest concern has been their social emotional wellbeing and supporting our families. Getting to know their stories has been our priority. And not just that I have a piece of the story, but that we all have the story of our students. It's been wonderful to get them through the gate and know them by name in ways that we, as I believe Domenico mentioned earlier, we say their names multiple times. All of the staff at every gate, they know every single kid by name. And that's huge and we connect with them. I do home visits. If you're not here, if you're missing 37 days, I need to know why. And we come out and we do it gracefully, as some of our colleagues have mentioned. I'm loving, but I'm firm. And so I need to know, why aren't you here? And knowing our student's story is very important. Huge shout out to our community facilitator who works tirelessly along with my front staff, calling parents every single day. There is not a day that we don't know why a student isn't here. And that has been a huge impact in our business here because if they're not here, we're really missing out. So in November and December, it was painful. We had some really large absences. Thirty-six students in a cohort is a lot. Today, we had four students absent in our morning cohort and we've been in our single-digit absences for the last several weeks. And that has been a huge win for us here. And as Ryan mentioned, you know, doing instruction, it is a little bit different and it is somewhat challenging, especially in our primary grades where everything is all developmental, where we have to move and touch things and manipulate things and, and play while we're learning. And play is so important in our development. Those are things that I'm looking forward to adding to our day. We have and are fortunate enough to have six reading teachers. I have one full-time and five hourly support teachers. We service over 120 students. We have graduated some, so I'm very excited about that. And we're looking at shifting our groups now that we have our new data. Our data obviously shows that we have needs, but it also shows that our students are moving. Very proud of my upper grade because they are incredibly challenging to motivate, to do things and they're capable. So doing those shout outs for them has been very, very helpful. I'll just point out sixth grade, especially because they are already in that middle school vibe. So getting them to be engaged is a little challenging even on a normal day. But it's sixth grade alone increased by 69%. 69% of those kids went up. And I know we're not talking proficiency, but I like to celebrate all of our rainbows. And so moving is definitely one of the things that we celebrate. Every little thing is, is a big deal. I am looking forward to moving my instruction into in-person as Amy shared. I visited Woodland. I had an opportunity to visit there and take a look at that. I'm very, very anxious to get moving in that direction, obviously in a safe and timely manner. But I have my plan set up. We have our students reconfigured. Everything is, is ready to go. And as soon as that green light, I think that's going to be an additional plus for us. I'm happy that we started Project Hix and it's about two weeks ago or two weeks before the break. And that has been an additional layer to get our students connected. The biggest thing I am proud of with the entire staff is that we've all divided who we keep in contact with. Which families do we follow up with every week? And so that's been divided. I call families directly in some instances, my office staff, so we can continue to build that story. And it's that one person that that family can always reach to when there's something that needs to, needs to be addressed. And that's been a huge, huge thing for us. And not a single person on this staff says, wow, you know, that's not my job. Everybody's done everybody else's job and they're happy to do it. And so I couldn't, you know, like all of my colleagues mentioned, from our custodial staff to our hourly support teachers, to our supervisors, they have done above and beyond. And they sparkle in every way. And yes, we have our challenges and I look forward to working collaboratively as a district in a unified way with our professional development for our teachers. And how do we continue this, this positive momentum with our families and keeping them engaged and empowered? And so I think with that, I've shared enough and I'm going to pass it over to my neighbor and friend, Dwayne.
Thank you, Cindy. Good morning, trustees. Good morning, colleagues. To begin with, I have tremendous admiration and appreciation for all the Ray teachers, all of the staff, students and families at Ray. Our certificated and classified staff continue to do whatever it takes to best serve our students, given all the challenges that we have experienced. At the June, at the January 26th Board of Education meeting, I along with a team of people presented and discussed a coherent system of math professional development and teaching and learning at Ray and in our school district. Given our previous focus on mathematics, today I will address, address an aspect of English language arts in TK through grade one. In regard to reading, an area of focus is on grades TK through one. The, the research is overwhelming that children who fall below grade level in reading in TK through one are highly likely to never catch up or they're unlikely to ever catch up. We must do everything we can to ensure that children are at grade level when they leave these early grades. The challenge and really urgency that we are seeing with our kindergarten and first grade students is, is not unique to COVID learning loss. Although the reading challenges may be exacerbated to some degree, these challenges have been present at Ray prior to COVID. The challenges students have in their reading include a lack of phonemic awareness, letter sound identification, phonics, orthographic knowledge, or the knowledge to translate their word or letter knowledge to writing. Students must be able to achieve in these different areas at the level called for by the standards. Similar to the discussion we had in the area of mathematics, we're building collective knowledge. Given this TK one focus, the, the Ray TK through one teachers and I are, are diving deeply into the standards. What is the rigor of the K and one standards? With this level of rigor in mind, what is the progression? What exactly must a child know and be able to do in order to achieve the standard, standard? What exactly must a child know and he be able to do in order to achieve the standard, standard? Or even begin to work on the next skill? Our TK one teachers use quick assessments, including assessments of phonological knowledge and orthographic ability to provide students with targeted instruction at their level. NMUSD has provided all K-five teachers or K-six teachers with excellent resources, including our Wonders adoption and other instructional tools. As the specific next steps for each child are identified, the teachers are able to use these, use, uh, tools provided within these resources to target instruction. Similar to our previous discussion of math, I'm proud of our Ray teachers. We are a community of learners, learning about instructional practices, how to build connections with students, and generally how to best serve children. As schools become more knowledgeable about how students learn, how do I identify where each child is in their learning progression? And how to best use the tools available to us, we will be in a much better place to meet the needs of each child. And with that, I'll pass this along to Dr. Peralta, my esteemed colleague.
Thank you, Duane, and good morning trustees, uh, for this opportunity. First, uh, I'm so grateful and thankful, uh, to our trustees and our executive cabinet for the decisive action to reopen our campuses at the end of September. We know that in-person is the best place for kids and that's particularly true of our most vulnerable, um, students. I'm also grateful for Victoria's teachers and staff who have responded these extraordinary times with empathy, compassion, and sound instructional decisions. They are truly my heroes. Today, I want to highlight where we're at and where we're going in the areas of SEL and academics at Victoria. On the SEL front, I'm proud to report that our students continue to be resilient. They come to school engaged and happy in person every day. That's not to say that we do not have students struggling emotionally and socially. We meet each and every child where they're at and we use our zones of regulation daily. And our teachers continue to work with our students on regulating their emotions. And we have our sale team, our school psychologists, our PBIS team and our behavior specialists, all at the standby, ready to help and support our students, um, at the tier-two and tier-three level. As you can imagine, um, our SST, our student study teams, uh, meetings have increased significantly with these challenges. And we've refined what we've done in these meetings by first focusing on our parents. And prior to, um, our president's week, we had just such, uh, a, a team meeting of a first grade family. Where, uh, after introductions, I stopped and I asked the parents, how are you doing with all of the challenges? And I left enough think time and processing time. There was a little bit of a pause, but that's all this parent needed to open up and felt that she had permission to share with us what her struggles were. And I'm proud to say that right there on the spot, our school community facilitator and our entire team acted as a village. And we were able to get this parent hooked up with food banks and with, um, support with her cell phone service. So this is just one example of how we're not only supporting students, but also our families. On the academic front, um, our students did take a hit with the loss of learning time and our data reflects that. We're continuing to use our three intervention teachers to provide small group SIP support synchronously with fifty-six students and they provide that support four times a week for thirty minutes. I am, I am really pleased with our data that's just coming aboard right now that we do see our students making slow and sustained growth. But a digger deep into the data suggests that those students that are making the greatest gains are those students who are taking advantage of not only the in-person, but the asynchronous programming. And, um, of course, students that are not taking advantage of both, uh, we're not seeing the same growth rate. And it's of no fault of their own. What we're finding is that many of our families are still having to, and are struggling to work and to put, you know, food on the table and to pay rent. And so they're, they're, what they have to turn to are sitters, daycare centers, and they just don't have the capacity to support our younger students with asynchronous learning. So that is indeed a challenge. And our other challenge has been attendance. Not long after the break, we had up to forty-six percent of our students absent. But that is returning and our absent rates are down in the single-digit approaching ten percent. It's still a little bit above where we normally are, but I think that is a, a shout out to our parents for doing a great job of keeping their kids home if they are symptomatic. Moving forward, we're going, we're going to continue to keep grade level complex texts at the center. We're going to continue to build knowledge about top, uh, topics and focus on foundational reading. In conclusion, I just want to thank our trustees and executive cabinet for the additional resources to operate our schools safely and providing us those extra resources to provide our students with the time and support that they need, um, to recoup that lost learning time. I'd like to now turn this over to my colleague, Dr. Jennifer Hackett over at Wilson.
Hello, everyone. It is definitely my honor to represent Wilson today. Um, it's been, um, my second year here in Newport Mesa and my second year, of course, here at Wilson. And I am learning every day and grateful every day for this wonderful community and the teachers and staff that I work with. And, um, we are definitely making lemonade out of lemons this year with the rest of the district. And, um, each day, um, again, evolving and learning, um, how we can make the best out of this situation. And we definitely have some positives. We've definitely had challenges. And again, we're learning every single day, um, how to get through this. Um, I definitely want to give some shout-outs. We're big at shout-outs here at Wilson, um, to the staff here, um, from the front office, um, that, uh, is calling families every day. Again, like, uh, uh, the principal, uh, Ms. Pedrosa, uh, Pomona talked about, we have to know their stories. We have to know where they are and what's happening. And that's really been, I think, the central tenet of what's been going on this year. What's happening with our families? How can we better serve them and how can we better serve our students, um, to understand where they're coming from every day? And how we can get them to school and how we can engage with them. So that's been a really big focus of this year is just understanding what's happening in our community and with our families so we can help and support them and get their kids to school. So, um, and again, just, uh, with our front office, with our school community facilitator, it's been a big team of that, um, with our nurse, our nurse and our health assistant. Um, our health assistant's actually been out for, um, a, a month or two right now, but the district's been amazing in sending us substitute health assistants. Um, even our office assistant was out a little bit, um, but we've had substitutes and people there. Um, so I'm just so grateful for the team who has been communicating with our families, um, to try to help and support our students. Because, uh, West Coast to Mesa, I'm just looking at data, has definitely been, um, hit, um, a little bit more significantly with some COVID-related things happening and going on. And, um, I'm just so grateful for the staff, um, who has risen to the occasion, again, to support our families and our students and getting our, uh, kids here. Because again, like everyone, we've been challenged with attendance. It's gotten a lot better this month. So we're really happy about that. January was a little, uh, made our hearts publicate a little bit, but we're getting through that because we work together as a team and we have communicated. And that's really what's been so critical for all of us again. So the teachers have been caring, the students have, you can see the smiles, uh, right up here. Hi, how are you? That's been our big thing. How are you? Talking with the students each day and trying to, um, understand their stories and getting them here. Again, we've had the attendance challenges. We've had the asynchronous work challenges, but some of the big highlights that we focused on, again, is that connection with social emotional learning with our students. And, uh, we went through the trauma-informed professional learning last year that really made an impact on our staff. So this year, we, we kindness was our theme. We've added resilience to that for staff. We have monthly themes, uh, this year that we kind of integrate throughout the day with our monthly meetings. Like, what's your bright spot? Talking about compassion, taking care of yourself, all of these little things that we then push on out to our community and our families to kind of overlap. We think that that's a really good thing. Uh, we've been working with our social work intern, um, with the sale resources. Um, we have a partnership right now that we're starting with the Turning Point Counseling, that we're using our Title One Fund Score to, we've referred about twenty students to Turning Point. We're working with Repo Crusier and Olive Press to support our families right now. And we just really think that social, emotional, um, mental health perspective is so critical for our students and family and staff right now. Um, in terms of academics, I'll jump to that really fast. Um, again, like colleagues, I think the small group, um, two-point-five hours has been very instrumental. Um, we have focused this year in working with the district, um, English learner TOSAS. And we're really focusing right now on these high leverage practices during ELA and ELD, um, during those times. So we've had a really big push. The teachers are loving it and staff right now. So we've really enjoyed this focus because we can't go to our traditional, um, ELD block that we've been doing. So how can we get our big bang, um, for these high leverage practices? That's been our big focus for PD this year. Um, and our hourly support team, can't say enough great things about them. And our full-time lead, that's been a blessing. We have six. And, um, we are seeing some great things with our data, but what I've seen also too is that the students who are very struggling, they're still kind of struggling. And one of the reasons for that, which some people have mentioned already, is that it's very hard with the attendance at home on Zoom. Our families have a lot going on. So those are big, great successes and some challenges, but I think the bottom line with it all is the communication and the connection with our families and understanding what kind of support they need and how we can help them, um, and supporting our staff to be able to connect with the families. Um, and one last thing I'll say is that during conference week, being able to do that on Zoom for, um, a school, we noticed that we had better attendance than we've ever had because we could do that on Zoom. So we had different options of doing that. So it's one great thing during this that we think that we've kind of evolved. So we hope we can hang on to those kinds of things. How can we better connect with our families? That's about it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you. John, would you like to take, um, once again, any pressing questions or we'll direct them to John? Ash, uh, trustee Anderson, I believe, wants to speak.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much. Um, I'm wondering to, um, Dr. Pedrosa, you were sharing about going to Woodland and seeing what they are doing, um, with the extra support. Um, is that something that would be, like, are we, what does the process look like currently? Are we, are we waiting for district direction on that? Or how, what is the understanding of the potential of doing that in other zones? Or particularly in the Estancia zone? Cause I know literacy, particularly speaking to what Dr. Cox was saying, is so essential. And this time is really valuable.
So we are, uh, I've already got invited to the next step meeting where we'll talk about what that specifically looks like at a site.
Hello.
I can hear.
I can hear.
You hear me now? Yes. Sorry about that. Um, so I have been invited and some of the principals have been invited to that next step meeting where we're going to meet with, um, our district leadership and look at specifically what that looks like at each site to ensure we have proper training for our hourly support staff, the right environments for our students. So we're not mixing cohorts and just really kind of fine-tuning that process before we can move forward and doing it in a safe and systematic way. But I'm excited about it and I think we're going to move in that direction soon.
Awesome. And then I have just one more question. So it sounds like everyone just got the mid-year, um, results back as to where students are. What do the next steps look like? Do you need district permission to move ahead? What, what is the next step to make sure that kids targeted are targeted and start have targeted instruction right now? Based on what, what their current levels are?
So we, uh, right before the break, uh, last week was when we were collecting our data. We've already looked and analyzed that data. We've already made shifts to our current groups for that. We've graduated several students. Yay. They got a little letter that says you've been graduated and moved on. So that we're able to support as many students as possible, um, and continuing that momentum. So we're still definitely targeting where we are, not necessarily waiting. I think it's just going to get better, not that we're not doing. I have moved into one-on-one support for Kinder with my IAs. I have that fortunate ability to do that. And so we're targeting some students one-on-one and doing that here in person. And then with some parent, um, education pieces as well.
Great. Thank you.
You. And again, any other questions should be directed to John. That would, that would be great. And while we still have the elementary principals, I assume they're leaving. But, um, again, thank you so much. We all appreciate this so much. It was very important for us to hear directly from you. And we also want you to thank your teachers and your support staff and your intervention teachers and hourly support teachers because we know how much they're also helping at the schools. So, um, we'll digest everything you said and have continued conversations about it. But again, thank you so much. It's truly appreciated. Mr. Drake.
Yeah. So thank you to all the elementary principals, uh, and, uh, definitely board members, please send me any questions and follow-up and we'll work in groups with principals to make sure you get the information you need. Um, and we'll do a little better job next time to make sure we stick to our three minutes so that we can have some discussions.
Or give us longer, we'll, we'll make it a longer.
We'll make it a longer session. Yeah, definitely. I knew it was going to be a challenge, uh, for any principal to spend three minutes to try and sum up this last year, uh, and its impact. So, uh, appreciate all the work of the principals and want to thank them again. Uh, we were going to take a few minutes, uh, just to kind of gather our thoughts before we get into secondary. So can we just say five minutes? So that gives us, uh, what time? Fifty-four, fifty-three?
Okay.
So, is that right? Ten fifty-three. We'll go ahead and start with secondary and, uh, we'll move forward with that.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready to be, to continue.
We are ready and, um, uh, we, we're going to try and follow the same drill, although, uh, we have spoken, uh, with the secondary principals to, uh, about four minutes, uh, per, per zone, uh, discussion with you and then open up for question and answers.
Red cloud twice? I mean, cloud's back.
Pardon me?
Cloud is going to be back for secondary?
Yeah, cloud will be back. We're actually going to have five zones here. We'll have an alternative zone with the cloud campus, early college, high school, uh, and back Bay, Montavista, as well. So we're going to just jump right in. Um, and Costa Mesa will be our first one up. I did want George Knights again to take about a minute. You've seen the data. You've got the data, but just so that he can do a quick, um, literacy piece with the data. And then we'll, we'll jump into the Costa Mesa zone and Dr. Haley and Quan.
Oh, and I know, um, a, a few of us had questions about Estancia zone. We didn't have time for, um, either. I guess we can just make sure we stick to time so we can get to questions for them. Cause they're the, they're the, yeah, would it be too much to go in reverse order for that?
To have Estancia go first will, will be an issue. Requested that they go last because they, uh, Dr. Mr. Halt had an already scheduled, um, issue.
Thank you. We'll just be, we'll be timely.
Okay.
So that's a no.
Okay. So I'm going to have George coming up and, and quickly go through, uh, the data that you've got in front of you and then we'll jump into the Costa Mesa zone.
Hello again. Just get situated here. Okay. My pointer. Okay. Good morning. Once again, how is it going? A sip of water from a fire hydrant, it could feel like if I were you. It, we've heard from twenty-two principals and, um, we have eleven more. So let me just say that, um, my job today is to give you an overview on, from, from each zone about the two data sets that you requested on SBACK, which is one of our, of course, our standardized tests. And I've, I've showed you that and you have it in your, in your packet. So I'm not going to go over that again. Just to say that it's a different historical baseline. It's a different context. It's a little bit old. Um, but it does give us that baseline from what we would typically expect with the performance of our students against a standardized test. So, um, having said that, I'm going to move to the IRL and I'm going to start with Costa Mesa zone on, so let me move the, one of the things I want you to see in this data is that I did not. one of the things I want you to see in this data is that I did not move.
Yeah, let's stand.
Okay, well, how do we get that off the screen? It's not on mine. Interesting. Okay, so it, it's clogging the little, one little spot on the data, but that's okay. On the IRL is an instructional reading level, much like a grade level equivalency. But the difference is that a grade level equivalency is nationally normed. So the bar that is set for what is at grade level changes. Right? Based on the normed average on the, the star reading assessment. We have chosen 10 years ago when we started on star reading to use the instructional reading level rather than the grade level equivalency. It makes about a 10% difference on, because it's a little bit easier to hit the bar if it's a nationally normed moving bar than it is to have a standard bar, which is a criterion or a performance based. We set a standard, we set a bar this high because we have high rigor in our classroom. We have high standards and we set it there. And then from there, year by year, we look to see how the students meet that bar. Bar doesn't move. So an instructional reading level is a little bit more rigorous to me. Now, given that that is what we judge ourselves in terms of where the students are for reading benchmark in our school district. And that's true for secondary as well as elementary. So what you're seeing in this data is on, you have the whole zone and we're looking at Estancia, but I'd like to look, start Costa Mesa zone. So we have, we have the entire zone and I'm talking about the impact of the pandemic. So that's what we're looking at this for from a big picture point of view. The principals may or may not reference the SBACK data nor this data. That's my job to do from a big picture presentation. So you'll hear them make boots on ground comments about the specifics of the challenges and the strategies that they have from their campus. So let's set that context and we'll just move quickly through this. So we can see that as a zone for Costa Mesa, they're performing about on, oh, 4% different. On, so there is an impact from this point right here, not a ton, maybe 4%. When you look at Costa Mesa Middle School, you see almost typical performance of where they meet at grade level. The blue, dark blue is grade level. And the light blue is below grade level and the gray is not tested. So for the middle school, it's about what they normally do, if not just a little bit less as a result of the pandemic. When we look at the high school, there's the gap that we're seeing. So yes, there is an impact. I don't think that surprises anybody. We knew that there would be an impact. This is the mid, we do three times a year and this is the middle window that we are looking at. It wouldn't surprise you that the first window was pretty, was much worse. The decline was much higher. We are catching up. I wish I could have showed you that data on, but this data is showing a different look at it. So then we have a look here that would tell you what the grade levels are doing in this year at the mid. And this is our significant student groups. I think the, the, the point to make here is that no surprise, the most are, are subgroups that are the greatest challenge, the greatest rest, they have the least amount of resources at home are the ones that are doing the most poorly. And that would be district wide. So this is not a surprise. We heard this through almost every zone in the elementary and it rings true here in secondary as well.
George, why is it not tested so high?
Okay, good question. And, and that, that has to do a little bit with the sites and they'll have to explain why they might have one was higher than another and Costa Mesa and Newport Harbor. On, they have a different criteria that they use for their freshmen when they first come in. So you'll see not as many tested at the freshman level, which has impacted the entire zone. So as you look at that, that rings true. On, and maybe those principals can respond to that, but we work with them to, to get as many tested that we possibly can. Okay.
That follows my question. I was going to ask the same thing.
Is slight, but still there for T-Winkle. Maybe they had a few more students actually as a result of the mid-year compared to the other two years. And as we look down more, the, the high school took a little hit when it comes to the, the change between the nineteen and twenty. And we look at the grade levels here and the student groups at this point. So again, those subgroups that are the most challenged are the ones that we see struggling. We look to, to the harbor zone. Here is the impact of the ninth grade. So those are not tested freshmen. They just have a different criteria by which they use reading placement. On, so again, it's a slight change from nineteen twenty to twenty-one, which would be the impact of the pandemic. You have a little bit of a growth for Enson. The high school, quite a significant decline. And then you see this for the student groups. CDM zone. Slight increase in the numbers of students who are at grade level. There's a little bit less in terms of the overalls, but Cronomar Middle School, a little bit of an increase as well. And the high school, a fairly significant increase from one year to the next. I'll let you draw your own conclusions on where that might have come from. And then we have the grade levels and the student groups. The alternative zone, the wheels come off the bus. It's really difficult to, to make sense of this data because every school is very significantly different than, you know, the cloud campus only has one year of data. And they had a startup. Dr. Shaka will, will tell you more about that. On, so it was really tough to even say anything about the zone. Each school, you know, maybe the one early college might be the one, one place where we see kind of a, of a typical comprehensive-like high school. And they did have a, a, a pretty significant increase from last year to this year. Okay, so that is, it concludes my presentation on the IRL data. Thank you.
And we're going to just jump right on in and have Dr. Haley and Dr. Quang go ahead and, and move through your few minutes of presentation at Costa Mesa High School and Middle School.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, trustees. We appreciate this opportunity and pleasure to see all of you in, in the Zoom and, and there at the boardroom. I'm going to go ahead and start with our middle school data and then Dr. Haley will discuss the high school data and then Dr. Haley and I will discuss the interventions and supports and strategies that we have school-wide. So here, the first slide you'll see on the left, the chart for middle school, seventh and eighth grade. The comparison of our quarter one grades over the past three years. As you can see, the 2021 to quarter one grades is basically end of October, early November. That's when the grades were captured. So our students were still in distance learning. We didn't start hybrid in person until November 9th. You can see the, the staggering differences in terms of the number of Fs between kids before the pandemic. Between middle school kids versus those in the 2021 school year. You know, it went from 5% to 16%. If you look at unduplicated students, it jumped from eighty-nine to 117 students and total grade marks, about 666 Fs earned from those 117 students. Same thing with eighth grade, you see the, the big difference, a big jump in, in the number of Fs given out. If we move to the slide on the right, you can see the student group there. When we disaggregated our data for the semester one grades by our significant subgroups, you can see the big difference in terms of our vulnerable population of students, our English learners, foster youth, homeless, and students with disabilities in terms of their achievement. So things that we are definitely concerned about. So Dr. Haley.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Quang. So to kind of piggyback off of what he was saying, very similar data. You look at the three columns on the left, which is previous two years. And then obviously the last column is the current here. You see the growth in the amount of D and Fs that we have as a school site for secondary. We grew by about 230 students who typically would not have a, an F on their transcript. And we grew again, 230 students from what would be a typical year if we are a seat-based learning only. And several reasons for that. And I kind of highlighted above in that little statement. But it's really making sure that we are focusing on the entire student, knowing the stories. We've got 1,669 students at our school and all of them have a different background, different needs at home. And it's supporting the social, emotional, making sure that they are ready to come to school, able to come to school. And if they are not, you know, digging deep, like I heard our elementary colleagues say, why they are unable to come to school and then finding supports for them so they can come to school. A quick highlight, if you look in the upper right corner, last year we were able to maintain, you know, our graduation rates. So we're really happy just with the supports that we are embedding, that we're able to still make sure that our final goal of getting students with a diploma, we're still meeting, you know, a, a high percentage that's above the state average. And what we're doing to support students, next slide. So at Costa Mesa, we have a wellness center and that wellness center is here to, and designed to support all of our students. But we have several different support parts of this. In this wellness center, we rely heavily in our community facilitator, Rosa Rochin. We also have Zyra Diaz, who's here on Friday. They are key to communication to families to ensure we have that consistent communication home and we can make sure that we are supporting all of our students. We have a social worker who's here. We have additional hours that is through our Costa Mesa Foundation for Turning Point Counseling, as well as Project Hope Alliance, which is here to support our McKinney-Bento and foster youth students. All of that again is designed to make sure that we can support kind of that soulfulness of our students to make sure that they are ready to learn. And as you can see, we do have 305 English language learners. And the data that Dr. Quang and I both showed represents, my four minutes wouldn't go a little longer, represents that we are, you know, again, really trying to make sure that we're digging deep to address their needs.
And some, some additional supports that we instituted at the start of the second semester, including our learning labs after school, Tuesday through Fridays. So on the in-person days, students can volunteer, show up, they get signed up by the counselor, by the teacher, and they can get additional supports from our teachers that stay after school, as well as student teachers that are there who are available. And also we're looking into hiring some college tutors to bring them in for additional support so we can expand that program and get more kids because we're, we're limited by the size of our, you know, locations with, you know, with social distancing and spacing. We also instituted support classes and eight mesh support classes across high school, middle school. So four of those high school courses include math algebra one, chemistry A, comp lit one, and world history. We do have a EL two, ELD two support class for, for the students who are struggling, both middle school and high school. And then three of those support classes are for middle school kids alone. We identified about 65 middle school students who had four more Fs and we're putting in them with designated teacher to provide that extra support, not additional coursework, just additional support to get, get their assignments turned in, to eliminate their zeros and just to stay, you know, up, up to date with their coursework because our students are taking eight classes. So it's a lot for them to manage. And we're trying to help them by giving them the support class. And so far it's been benefiting them well with the relationships that our teachers are building with, with those particular kids that are struggling. And I thank you very much for everyone for being here and we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Trustee Anderson.
Well, thanks. My hand goes up from before with the data, but I do have a question about Mesa. Are you, is this, I, I think in one of the conversations that I was having last week, it said, it seems like particularly at Costa Mesa High School, the homeless student numbers are really accelerating in ways that no other school is currently experiencing. What, which is really concerning to me. And so what other support besides, I know you, Project Hope points, I believe is there part-time, but how else can we help those kids who it looks like were at the highest levels of struggling on, based on some of that data?
So to speak to that, Dr. Haley, I'll start since, you know, looking at the last year's dashboard, we had, I think, 10 homeless students and eight foster youth. And you can see the increase from this year. And we're continuing to identify students as, as our SCF or counselors, administrators are making phone calls home for kids who maybe have a bad attendance or not passing their classes. And we find out the story and what's happening. I think a lot of the families out there are, are, don't know that McKinney-Bento's available and there's resources provided for them because they've lost their job and now they're living with additional family member that's around the corner. And now they're having multiple families in one home. I think it's, it's getting the word out to the families and having them understand that there's resources available, like Hope Hospital. Our SCF connects them to Hope Hospital, to Carisalis. They provide rent, rent assistance, you know, with monies, food as well. You know, I send, we send out information on food drives that are happening, you know, at Anaheim area or in our area. And just getting the word out so that families know that they have services available. We just, we just don't know that they are in this situation until we start calling and diving and finding out. So definitely getting the word out and, and letting the families know that they can reach out to us and we can connect them to some of the resources. Dr. Haley.
Well said. The only thing to piggyback off that, I mean, the good news, trustee Anderson, is that, you know, you know, lots of families are calling the school and using, you know, not only our community facilitator, but counselors to, you know, access those resources. And then really, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're here to support our community. And as Dr. Quang mentioned, you know, we're getting those resources. And so just that constant communication going out is really starting to help to kind of change, you know, those level of supports that we're giving families.
And do you have a facilitator for Mesa Middle?
We currently don't. We have one SCF that's full-time across seven, 12. Ms. Rosa Wishing, she's been here for a number of years before I, before I arrived and she's an excellent resource. We do have one Zyra Diaz. She helps out. I think she helps out with elementary sites and helps out with Costa Mesa Middle and High School on Friday. So she's been an excellent resource that we've been tapping into on the middle school side to help out each Friday. So having them both has been a blessing.
How many students is that in total between middle and high school?
Middle school, before pandemic, at the peak, we were above 700. I think currently we're about 600 due to some of the kids shifting into cloud and, and other surrounding areas. So 600, about 600 for middle school. So then we have about 1,000 for high school.
Okay, so might be time for a middle school facilitator. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Okay.
And again, trustees, if questions come up later, you can send them my way and I'll work with principals to get you the information you need. Okay, thank you, Dr. Quang and Dr. Haley. Next up, we're going to have Corona Del Mar with Dr. Gogel and Mr. Hill.
Good morning, trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you and our colleagues this morning. As you know, the pandemic has really created a storm in many ways for us and we are all together in the same storm. But our kids are not all in the same boat. We do have many students who are with engaged parents, access to extra resources, strong educational backgrounds, and they're completely, in a completely different boat than our struggling students. And the students who are struggling should not surprise us. Their struggles have just grown exponentially under the pandemic. So they are typically English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, and in a lot of households where there's no adult home to coach them. So in looking at the data to discover those students, because even if it's just one student, it's one student too many in a boat with holes. We need to scoop them up and, and do everything we can to provide a supportive environment for them. So we look at student engagement. Now, these are students who have a marked two on the attendance marking, which is that distance learning not engaged. And so in the school year, we looked at 24 or more period absences to sort of get a handle on what would be like three Monday distance learning days. And so we have 53 students in middle school right now with 24 or more period absences. And so that is actually 38 of them are eighth graders, which is not surprising. And so they, they are predominantly eighth graders and we are reaching out to all of them. Nearly all of them have either had an SST or an IEP already and also counselor and teacher contact. And many of them I've reached out to as well, just to provide extra support for them. In high school, In high school, they have 160, 106 students with 24 or more period absences. And that would equate to four days for the high school kids because they only have six classes as opposed to eight. And I know the high school is doing similar measures to intervene and to try to reach out to them. Because if they're not engaging and participating in the learning process, then we're not going to be able to get them moving forward. We also have a higher number of students receiving Fs during the first semester 1920 compared to 2021. Middle school students, there were 70 students in 1920 and it's gone up to 189 students who have Fs in the 2021 school year, and that's at that first semester marking period. High school similarly, 127 students up to 292, 292 students in 2021. And as you know, in high school, the stakes get a little higher because those are students that then need to remediate those credits in order to graduate. And digging deep in the disc, in the, in the data, the next two categories are seven through 12. We looked at them as a school site holistically from seven through 12. They are, the disproportionate impact on English learners is apparent. In 2020, in 1920, we only had, we had 23 grades broken up among 12 students. So only 12 students had failing grades that were English learners. And this year we are looking at 30 students. So it's almost three times the amount of the year before with 163 grades of Fs. And so it's gone to 1.9 on average to 5.4. So students are now failing more than one class in addition. The courses with the highest percentage of Fs in grade seven through 12, you're looking at math, 8%, that's no surprise. And music at 7.4% is a surprise and I have some suspicions as to why that's happening and I'm going to dig a little deeper. And then English, English Language Arts, 5.9%. And when you're looking at the percentages in the parenthetical notation, you're looking at 21.2. And that's the socioeconomically disadvantaged. So you can see it goes from 8% for our general school overall. And then all of a sudden up to 21.2% for our students who are identified as socioeconomically disadvantaged. And that's largely based on the parent education level. And so you can see that it just sort of disproportionately impacts those students who are struggling. And we need to fill the bowls, the holes in their boat. I'm going to pass it on to Josh. Josh is going to speak about what we're doing to fill those holes.
Yes, right after I unmute myself. So we are applying a three-pronged approach to doing that. First, focusing on social emotional learning. Our counselors have developed a way for students to request appointments virtually. So whether the students are in person or at home, they have access to their counselor. And we're addressing issues individually with them there. And those are obviously our most significant issues. We're able to refer through the counselors, students to other resources outside of the district if they need that additional support. But we recognize, as Dr. Gogel said, that students need to be engaged, they need to be participating. They need to feel like they can learn before any of that other academic magic happens. We've continued group counseling opportunities for students as well through one on campus, an organization we've been working with now for a number of years. And they are finding ways to keep kids connected even through a distance. Our students have taken on this burden as well. We have several student groups that are working to find ways to keep students connected, recognizing that often kids are the best suited to help their peers with their social emotional needs. So we've had several activities, everything ranging from games at middle school, done online to on-campus activities as simple as music in the quad at lunchtime or Valentine's grams. All the fun stuff we miss that students are continuing to keep up in front of us as we're moving forward. Academically, as Dr. Gogel said, we're very concerned about the number of Fs. We also have numbers of Ds and other grades that need to be remediated. So we have emphasized credit recovery during the year and allocated some resources toward offering more options than we have in the past during the school year. We anticipate some of that will have to be made up as well into the upcoming summer. We have a focus on learning initiative that we're implementing at our school. This is to help us identify other ways to assess learning beyond grades. Because grades really tell us a very vague story that we are trying to drill down into and identify specifically what learning targets, what objectives, what standards are not being met. So we're working with our teachers right now to articulate that and hope that that will generate strong returns in the future. We're also finding a lot of value in the student support hours. So we have 30 minutes a day for students Tuesday through Friday where they can get individual help from their teachers. And we're finding students both at home and in-person on campus accessing that resource. In the behavioral realm, we know that often what looks like an academic issue is really just a behavioral issue that's hiding. And so we've found ways to get around the academics to try to identify students. We have teachers who meet in what we call grade-like meetings. So there are teachers from different departments meeting together, all the ninth grade teachers, for example, regardless of what they teach. And what we're doing there is we're identifying students who are struggling in multiple classes. Because often, again, those challenges aren't directly related to an academic concern. They might be something else going on as Dr. Gogel referenced. And so we need to identify what those issues are, remove those barriers, those students can be engaged. And then finally, looking at attendance, the doctor will share it with you, to identify students who are standing out to us through that measure. So this concludes CDM's presentation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you what we're working on.
Any questions? No, yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, Ash.
I have one overall, but I'm happy to, I mean, I don't know if I should wait and hold it. But I was just wondering about the, the, how many Fs we're seeing currently based on incompletes from spring? And instead of those being past fail. So I was just wondering about, you know, and people didn't go through credit recovery, some of those turned into Fs. So I would love to know at each school site what that, that number is.
Yeah, trustee Anderson, we can get that for you. I don't think the principals will have that at their fingertips, District Five, but we can get you those numbers.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, if any questions come up for the Corona Del Mar Zone after this, or any point, just make sure you shoot them to me. And we're going to move on to the Newport Harbor Zone with Dr. Bolton from Newport Harbor and Jennifer Fox, Dr. Fox from Enson.
Hello. Good morning trustees. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Jennifer Fox at Enson Intermediate School. As you can see, the trend at Enson follows a similar trend to some of the other sites where we see a disproportionate representation on some of our special groups of learners. We have a higher number overall of students receiving Fs across the board. But those numbers are reflected in much higher percentages of our English learner students receiving Fs during the 2021 Semester One grades relative to the 2019, 2020 semester grades, about 22% of our ELS were receiving Fs. For now, it's at about 50%. The impact on our low-income students is also disproportionately represented where we see about 34% of our low-income students receiving marks of F, which is about 615 grade marks. So if you look at that low-income population, it's a pretty large representation. We can also see that in our mesh classes, we're almost doubling the number of Fs in math, English, science and history with, in particular, our English classes are two and a half times higher in terms of the total numbers of Fs. So when we're looking at all of this data, we do see some growth in IRL data, but we would strongly see that the grades are reflecting some level of lost learning for our students in terms of we're seeing less participation, less engagement and lower attendance numbers as well. If I could go on to the supports. So looking at some of the supports that we have in place, we rely heavily on our two counselors who do both Zoom and in-person check-ins with our students. Project Hope, working with our homeless population, Carisolus and our social worker interns. I put our SCF as both academic, but also in social emotional in identifying supports for students and logistics, transportation, COVID resources, SOS, food resources, all of those supports. And running our ELAC meetings, which have had very large attendance and communicating with our populations of English learner parents. In terms of our academic supports, we've added intervention sections, both targeted interventions in math and English this year. We've also added a targeted intervention that's more behaviorally focused, our behavioral support intervention, which is really focused on building relationships with students who may have behavioral underlying factors that are impacting their academic instruction. We've also added several academic supports in the area of tutoring, using Zoom tutoring, add a tutorial Zoom tutoring, and then reopening our tutoring center in the next couple of weeks to support students in socially distanced after-school tutoring settings with our teachers. And we're utilizing our EL coordinator. We saw 10 students reclassified this last fall. So we're seeing some growth in terms of our EL coordinator having high involvement with that student population. Behaviorally, like we also mentioned, the intervention supports, some of the contracts that we have in place and specialized SSR classes that we utilize. Our counselors also are involved heavily in attendance monitoring with our assistant principals so that we can use, look at correlations between attendance data and grade data. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bolton at this time at Newport Harbor. Thank you.
Trustees, colleagues, thank you for the opportunity and it's great to see everybody. The three leading variables that we look at constantly, even pre-pandemic, was grade distribution data, attendance data, and also credit deficiency data. If you look at the grade distribution data, grades nine through 11, the disproportionate amount of Fs that are being given or awarded during the pandemic has doubled in grades nine, 10 and 11. Sometimes it doesn't run along socioeconomic lines or students that have the means at home. But because of learning disabilities or other variables, they're not performing in the classroom or at school. The one variance, the one anomaly that we've noticed in 12th grade, our F rate has dropped significantly and our A rate has increased significantly. And I just credit that to the fact that there's a maturation process that occurs over the four years. Students have figured out the system, if you will, and they are performing at a very high level and they're doing fine. If you look at the next slide, you take a look at the credit deficiency that runs along ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th graders. Specifically, we have identified every student that's credit deficient and is not on track for graduation. And they have filtered into one of our three tiers of intervention. And if you look at the next slide, the three tiers of intervention and the actions that we are intentionally engaging in every day is tier one, students, parents and teachers. And the ethos here, the overarching goal is love and support. We love and support our students, our parents and our teachers as an administration here, and we take great pride in that. Within that hyper-communication triad, if you will, students and parents communicate with teachers about success or lack thereof in every single class. The tutoring interventions, we're lucky enough with the Newport Harbor Education Foundation to have nine tutors here from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. They're staggered throughout the day. Every student has access to these tutors and they can tutor students in every single subject, including essay editing. Two to 400 students go through, there's two to 400 contacts per week with the nine tutors from 8:00 to 4:30. And it's documented in our tutoring coordinator, who's also our avid coordinator, Mrs. Angela Newman, keeps track of every contact and every outcome or lack thereof. Tier two, counseling bilingual community facilitator, Fabiola Hammerling is absolutely fantastic. The one unintended consequence of having Zoom meetings with our second language population has been the growth in numbers on a monthly basis. Even in normal times, as we look to the future, we are going to continue having ELAC meetings over Zoom because we've never had such engagement and we've never had such participation. We've always taken great pride in going over to the West Side Community at Whittier Elementary for our ELAC meetings. But we have figured that this mode of communication has significantly increased our participation and we will continue it. In fact, next week, we have one scheduled for registration for next school year. And also Project Hope Alliance, we have 52 families that are housing insecure, food insecure families that are being helped with wraparound services through Project Hope Alliance. And also, again, our Newport Harbor Education Foundation, we have civically minded, very generous families in our attendance area who have given over $120,000 in food supplies, specifically at Target and Smart and Final. And we, there's a lot of anonymity, there's a lot of grace and there's a lot of love and care that goes into the handing out of certificates for families so they can go ahead and get food and they can get hygiene products and sustain some level of livability. Other tier two interventions include SST meetings, accommodations in classrooms, the perfunctory accommodations that we make throughout the year in normal times, and also technology needs. Our Newport Harbor Education Foundation has stepped in there for families. Also, just being a, what we take great pride in here at Newport Harbor is we have leveraged the resources of the communities. We have extremely generous families who are helping families in need, whether it's paying rent or just helping out any way they can monetarily or just taking families to appointments or whatever it is, we're connecting families in need to families that can. And it's been a great bonding journey since March 13th when we went to distance for this pandemic. And then the six support classes have been fantastic, specifically sprinkled throughout the ninth and 10th grade. And we are continuing for our high achieving students to AP and IB test prep for every IB and AP class and the possibility of having exams in May. But thank you, and that concludes the Harbor Zone presentation.
Do you like to ask your question now?
I'm sure, yes. This, this relates to the, the numbers, the concerning numbers of increasing Fs in our students, seven through 12. But more specifically, I'm concerned about the seventh through eighth, the seventh and eighth grade numbers. Because I know that in the high school, there is summer school that offers credit recovery, intermediate courses. But for the middle school child who in seventh and eighth grade is getting Fs and Ds, what are we going to be offering in the future? Just some, this is just a rhetorical question for now, because I think it's something that we need to keep our eyes on.
For someone, okay. Trustee Orswel.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. I have a question about those tutors, the nine tutors. Are those all paid for exclusively through your foundation?
They're all paid through the foundation, Newport Harbor Education Foundation.
So no, no district funding comes directly to support that, only what you raise in your foundation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee.
Yes, I'm wondering if, and they, now that the students have been, well, it's two parts. Now that the students have been back more in person at the junior high level, are we seeing, it's probably too early to say, but are we seeing trending towards less Fs specifically at junior high? Dr. Fox, perhaps?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Are we seeing anything preliminarily that shows that the Fs are decreasing now that they're back more in person? I know the first, most of the first quarter was, you know, our first semester was distance.
Well, we have seen that since we did have the return for the first three weeks of January, the first semester, we actually do grades on the quarter in middle school. So the first semester, second quarter reflected the same as the first quarter. But now that we're into the third quarter progress reports, we have seen a decrease now that we've had the students back on campus. And we have a very limited number of students who are on at-home learning at Enson, approximately 50 students of our total population. So for the students who are coming on campus, we have seen a decrease in the Fs going into this progress report period, but just for the third quarter.
That's a good segue into my, the second part of my question, which is at Harbor. Are we seeing students come back from that cohort C or how is that changing as time goes on?
As time goes on, we have more requests for Cohort C. Recently, we've had more requests for Cohort C, but we'll see in the next couple of weeks as the numbers improve, whether or not the ebb and flow exists between Cohort C and A and B. But students have on their assigned day, so if they're in, we're calling it blue and gray. If they're in cohort blue, and it's their assigned day, they have the option to stay home. And we're noticing that less and less students are opting to stay home and come in seat.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Mine's kind of a hybrid of, oh, mine is kind of a hybrid of trustee Ursula's and trustee Crane's. I would love not just the hypothetical, but what we are thinking about doing for middle school. Some of those numbers still seem troubling, even if it was for fall, if 50% of the English language learners are getting Fs, that's really concerning to me. So I would like to know what we are currently thinking around middle school. I know that hasn't necessarily always been a big focus for anything related to summer learning loss or summer programs. So I would love some more insight in that. And then to follow up a bit on what trustee Ursula was saying about tutors. So are there tutors that are available for students in Enson? What is that currently looking like? And then at some point, we'll get to Tinko, and I'll have the same question, but since we haven't gotten there yet, I would love to know about Enson. Thank you.
So we are planning on offering summer school in math and English specifically this year for our students at Enson. We're also expanding our tutoring opportunities, so we traditionally have been utilizing Zoom tutoring, but we're expanding that to include in-person tutors through our Avid program as well as after-school tutoring, which we offered pre-pandemic. So that after-school tutoring will be focused, and it will co-op our list of students in terms of their needs based on their grades. And the counselors will be making selections for assigned after-school tutoring on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. That will be in the classrooms, the library, using, you know, kind of the parameters. And we do have some district funding for our Avid tutors that comes out of a budget for Avid. And then we have additional foundation funding for after-school tutors, which are actually our teachers on campus that stay beyond the day and have extended school day options. So we're working on putting some of those dimensions together right now that we have that approval to move forward.
Thank you.
CDM Zone, if they have the same plans for seventh, eighth grade?
Sorry about that. Yes, we actually do. We recently developed a plan to, during the fourth, the fourth quarter, and if you can pull it out before the fourth quarter, to bring, to pay teachers for extra duty to stay after school. We'd identified some funding that would be available for that. So we're going to have teachers in content areas stay after school to tutor students in specific areas. And that's, that's our current plan to try to help especially the eighth graders. And they are of significant concern. They are actually have a higher F rate than the seventh graders. And just to prepare them to launch into high school, I want to send Mr. Hill really prepared kiddos. So we are definitely going to be doing some after-school things in addition to the support time that we have daily. So from, from 8:00 to 8:30, every single morning, we have 30 minutes that all the teachers are in their classroom. And we're finding that kids, as Mr. Hill said, students are accessing that both on campus and off with Zoom. They'll zoom into their teacher's classroom, Zoom room, and get extra help in that venue as well. So we've identified the kiddos that need that, and we're going to be referring them for the after-school tutoring.
Trustee Wagen?
Yeah, my question is, Bolton, I know that we're seeing double the amount of Fs that you saw that before. Is that, are we going to have even larger credit recovery summer programs, I guess? And then as we're seeing that, another question is, are we concerned that these kids, as they matriculate through high school, will, that this learning loss and this issue right now will carry on through as we're going through high school? I guess trying to get these kids, my concern is getting these kids back up to speed and getting them where these great seniors are, that they're getting more As than Fs and not the other way around as we see these freshmen go up through the senior level.
Yes, and that's a great question, and learning loss is on everybody's minds, especially next year. Students matriculate up to the next level of the discipline that they're studying, whether it's math, English, science, history, or world language. And so through credit recovery and through the intervention opportunities that exist here, we are closely monitoring the progress that they make and taking note of all the progress that they make or lack thereof. And specifically, we'll take a look at the summer and see what sort of summer school opportunity classes are going to be available. And then next fall, there's going to be possibly review in some of the ninth and 10th grade courses as students matriculate up from Enson and into 10th grade. That's specifically where we think the issues are going to reside, is in that ninth and 10th grade year next year. And teachers just can't hit the ground running. They're going to have to have some sort of assessment piece or some sort of monitoring piece in the first two weeks. So if a student is struggling, we can immediately identify them, contact parents, get them into a tier of intervention, get them into the tutoring, get them into the targeted interventions that we have on campus to get them up to speed quickly. And so that's learning opportunities beyond the instructional day that we're hyper-focused on at the current moment, and providing those opportunities from the summer throughout the fall as we go into second semester of next year.
I would just add to what Dr. Bolton said.
Does it?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I would just add to what Dr. Bolton said by saying that our, in particular, math and English classes have maintained the standards in terms of their grading of pre-pandemic so that when we're looking at that reflection of grades, there's still a lot of rigor built into that grading structure. Our math and English teachers are delivering the same amount of content that they would during a non-pandemic year by delivering lessons every day on a hundred-minute schedule. So as opposed to alternating and doing half the content, they're actually delivering the same amount of content. They'll, they'll complete the same amount of curricular material through this school year as they would even otherwise. So students are receiving a lot of the content, even though that the grades are reflecting maybe that lower level of proficiency in some of those areas, but they will have the exposure, especially in the math and English areas. Thank you.
I have a question about Cohort C. If a student chooses to be in Cohort C, are they in it, in that for their entire schedule? For instance, if they choose Cohort C, does that include sports activities? Does it include everything in their day?
Is that for the Harbor Zone, trustee Yelci?
Zones, I'd like to know, yeah. But I was asking, yes, with the Harbor Zone, but I'd like to know if it's different, like at CDM or Costa Mesa.
So I believe it's consistent among the comprehensive high schools in the sense that Cohort C, the commitment is until the end of the school year. If there are opportunities for students to go back and cohorts remain balanced, then they're allowed to come back. There are some classes, especially within athletics, drama, music, dance, choir, where there's opportunities for students to come on campus in the afternoon and perform or play a sport, and we're making that allowance.
But if they're in Cohort C for their core classes during the day, they, they are in all those classes in Cohort C?
Correct. So they will be taking their, their mesh classes and possibly world language online.
Is that the same in CDM and Costa Mesa, who've already spoken?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is for Mesa as well.
So thank you, Mr. Drake. Moving on.
We are going to move on to the alternative schools with Cloud Campus, Back Bay, Montevista, as well as early college high school. We're going to go ahead and start with Cloud Campus and Dr. Mike Shaka.
Trustees, it's great to see you again. Good mor, I think still morning. Yeah, good morning again. So Cloud Campus High School, Middle School is, is different than elementary. Some of the, some of the things that I shared this morning about elementary are different in middle school, high school, and some are the same. The first thing that I'd like to address is we're seeing the same trend of, of, you know, really high numbers of Fs. Cloud Campus is no exception to that. We started the year by all accounts in, in a really tough spot. We had as high as 44% of our students who received Fs that first progress report. So the first four weeks, that was for a myriad of reasons, but if you look at the chart up there, it was, it was really, really high. Then if you move down this graph to quarter one, progress two, semester one, you can see a slow decrease in the percentage of grades issued that were Fs. Now clearly, we're still way higher than we want to be. There, there's, there's no reason that, that we want to be anywhere near where we are. But one of the positives we do see from this is the trajectory of downward distributions of Fs. As Dr. Fox mentioned, we really want to focus on aligning those grades with student mastery so we have a clear idea of who, who has reached benchmark mastery and who is not, so we can intervene appropriately. But digging down a little bit further, you know, looking at the percentage of Fs administered is one thing, but looking at the who and the what is really, really important. And you see some of the same trends at Cloud Campus that you do in terms of some of our at-risk populations, some of our sub-populations that receive higher numbers, but it's, it's not the same distribution as, as I would expect. What we see at Cloud is that 70% of the Fs were given to 18% of our students. So what that tells us is 18% of our students are really struggling. They're failing all or almost all of their classes. The rest of the students, by and large, are doing very well. They're passing all or almost all of their classes. And so that, that really gives us a lot of insight as to the system and the structure and exactly how to best intervene. What we're focused on right now is deep dives into that, those 18% of the students as to exactly what we need to do on each individual case for the, for these students. But it was really important for us to understand exactly who. By far, the most commonly failed classes at Cloud Campus are PE and electives, which is exactly the opposite of what you see in our traditional, your traditional site. While we don't know for sure, there's a lot of speculation on my part as to why. And that revolves around the idea of PE is, is an asynchronous experience at Cloud, based off the, the schedule that we built. And asynchronous PE is very difficult for, for a number of reasons. So we're working with our, our teachers and staff to, to mitigate that the best we can. And then focused resource allocation is also really important in terms of looking at where the resources go and that direct impact those resources have on student achievement. We spend a lot of time doing that. This quote was made by one of our teachers a couple of weeks ago, and it's really resonated with me and our, and the entire culture of our campus. And it really goes, "Success will need to be defined different than in years past. This year, our success will hinge upon our ability to create and maintain community at Cloud Campus." And I think that is a very true statement. Where we are able to create connectedness to our school in terms of connecting kids to the school culture and community, we see success. Where we are not able to do that, oftentimes, kids struggle. And so some of the things that we've done in the very short period of time that Cloud Campus has existed, we already have a student newspaper that's on its fourth edition, which is fantastic. We have an ASB. We have college visits where the, where the kids do virtual tours of the colleges, and the college reps come and talk with our kids. We had our first spirit wear distribution last Friday, which was an experience in and of itself. But the fact that we have spirit wear at first-year school is, is exciting. We partnered with a professional soccer team, and the soccer players take our students through weekly drills and skills development. We have ELD. We have 13 different clubs. We've done over 150 home visits for our kids who struggle, announcements, you name it. So really focusing on this idea of connectedness to our school is, is the next frontier for Cloud Campus. And, and I guess I'll, I'll end with this. This idea that students do better in person is certainly true for a lot of students, but it's not true for all students. Some students need to be in-person learning, and some students don't. Some students are doing very, very well. So for us, the challenge is to figure out how we can best serve the needs of the kids based off of the decisions they've made, whether or not to be in Cloud Campus. Thank you.
Dr. Martinez, you're next, and then Mr. Wagner, you can go after Dr. Martinez.
Would you like me to go now? That's back there on the screen. Good morning, trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning, and thank you for spending time with us. I do want to mention that, you know, I want to recognize our students, our staff, and our families. What we've gone through the last 11 and a half months has been something that I don't think anybody saw a year ago at this time. But I'd like to spend some time to discuss with you the impact of student learning as it relates to early college high school because we've been in distance learning this entire time. So as recent as a site meeting that occurred last week, Thursday, was held with our staff to talk about our top four struggle subjects. And fortunately for us, the percentages are actually higher numbers than actual number of students. So we're talking about a handful of students in each of these areas. But the reason why this was so important is to really identify our starting point. Where were our students struggling the most so that we can come up with a plan that's going to be point of effect as early as next month, which will be addressed on the next slide. But another impact has been really the divide that we saw between our SED and non-SED students. These are socio-economically disadvantaged students against our non-socio-economically disadvantaged students because we're pulling students from every single zone in our district. And we are a Title I school, and we have been for six years. And right now, we're 62% of these students that qualify as an SED student. We've also looked at the mental health aspect, and this is something that goes back to almost a year ago. And utilizing three mental health counselors right off the bat and continuing with that, primarily housed through Turning Point, and you've heard Turning Point earlier this morning at a couple of the schools. We've had Turning Point for five years, and they've been a plus for us. Even utilizing Cal State Long Beach with an MSW intern. But currently, right now, they are serving 24 students, which is slightly over 10% of our student body. But one note that I wanted to make mention is that we do look at grades, and that's one metric. And when we compared our kids and how they're doing in the high school classes in comparison to the college classes that they've also been doing remotely, their grades came out to be the same this past semester. In fact, even if we compared to how they did last semester, second semester last year, as recall, we made a decision as a, as a district to calibrate the grades, go ABC, no Ds or Fs. Actually, a few of our students actually ended up with some Ds and Fs in the college courses because they couldn't calibrate. But my point is actually, our students actually did a little better this first semester than they did that second semester last year. In fact, on average, our students earned more credits this first semester than they did second semester of last year. So that's a little bit of progress for us. So next slide, please. So strategies to address the impact. So we went backwards. We had to deal with our students' Maslow. In order for them to build their self-actualization, you have to address their needs, their basic needs. Are they safe? Are they fed? Are they healthy? That's what we had to deal with. So we're looking to increase our Turning Point services. In fact, I've got a meeting this afternoon to look to increase that from three to four days, so we can now service up to 32 students. And then also, we started this back in the second semester. It's continual check-ins by our teachers, our counselor, and myself. We, as educators at early college high school, you have to be a Swiss Army knife. You have to be utilized in a lot of different capacities, so we are checking up on our kids. You know, I've probably done visits, home visits, over 25% of our student body, just to check on not only them, but their families. just to check on not only them, but their families and see that they're safe. Once we start addressing that first, then we can start looking at the academics. So what was a big plus for us was to have our college tutors clear to work remotely with their students, starting on November twentieth, because they were absent for the first three months. So I'm glad HR was able to work with us. Right now, we are still in a remote context, because again, we're just hoping that Orange County becomes Red County pretty soon, so that we're able to roll into our hybrid. But we're also, also going to be cleared, cleared as of right before President's break, when the district was on President's break, to start academic intervention hubs, maximum of fourteen students that we can bring back onto our campus while we're in distance learning to help those students. These are primarily the students that are in that SED population. No fault of theirs. They're just not in an environment where they can self-actualize to be the best version of themselves. And last but not least, our National Honor Society pair tutoring system is something that we have used for the last year. And we've expanded this. This is primarily our juniors and our seniors, but we've expanded to sophomores to be paired with students to help them in any of their respective struggle subjects that they're working on and trying to improve. So that's in place. Now, it's not a bullet on this slide, but I think it's worth mentioning because it was brought up at the beginning. And I am actually really proud of our staff and our students with our, our IRL raise. That's not, that's not a mistake. If you were to ask anybody what our top academic priority is at ECHS, it is reading and literacy. And I'm also the avid district director. We, we found our instructional approach through WCC, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, reading, and reading's the anchor. And I told our students at the beginning, we've got to be a bunch of Abe Lincolns. We have got to go and read. This is how we're going to learn. And I feel you don't learn anything unless you put into practice and you use it for the better of this society. So where we read, we made novels available to them, and, and we had the increases. But particularly those students that needed to increase their reading levels because they ran a specific program, they made some big gains. So I'm really happy about that. But by notion, am I saying we should continue in distance learning in that capacity? But we will never give away or go away from our, our compass, which is reading. Thank you very much.
Morning, everybody. Thank you, trustees, for allowing me to speak to you today. I'd like to share with you some information regarding Back Bay High School. One hundred percent of Back Bay transfer students are credit deficient. We are a Title I school where seventy-eight percent of our students qualify for the National School Lunch Program. Forty-one percent of Back Bay students are designated as English learners, and the average IRL is the fifth grade level. Distance learning has been very hard on alternative students. And in the beginning of this year, first trimester, eighty-four percent of my students were failing from one to all of their courses. DNF grades have increased by fifty-five percent as compared to nineteen-twenty also. As you continue to hear a common theme, our students are struggling socially emotionally, and social emotional issues are at all-time high. Severe and chronic absenteeism also increased during the pandemic for the alternative student. Next slide, please. So some of our strategies, interventions and supports at Back Bay are that students are able to earn fifteen credits more in a academic year than they are at the comprehensive sites with three trimesters, twenty-five credits each trimester, that's seventy-five credits in a year. Pre-COVID nineteen, we celebrated with our students, and we always celebrated with food. Our students appreciate it, and we get a lot of bang for our buck there. And, and since COVID nineteen, we haven't really been able to do that, and it's, it's been kind of a bummer. And again, it was a highlight for us here. But what we do offer our students, we have Robin's Nest pantry on campus, and we appreciate it so much where we have free, new and gently-used clothing. And we, we end up giving away a lot of jackets and t-shirts when it's cold. We also can give our students free toiletries from deodorant, toothbrush, et cetera, and also some non-perishable food items that we keep here on campus for them. We have also had some holiday food collection and distribution opportunities. And we would go to the Welcome Center, and we would meet our families there, and we'd pass them out to them. That's also been very positive. We offer our students, we have two sections of Read 180 to support our EL and IRL student needs. And we've created an epic process over this last year where we, we consider each student individually and, and the appropriateness of the placement in Back Bay. And although we end up taking the majority of all the students every now and then through team considerations, we are able to identify that maybe Back Bay wasn't the appropriate placement, and therefore they would stay at their homeschools. So Back Bay currently has four full-day-a-week of in-person learning. We have smaller class sizes and offer the opportunity for disenfranchised students to build new teacher relationships, new teacher-student relationships, and recapturing them and helping them to graduate. Teacher willingness to accept late work for full credit has been very beneficial to my alternative students, especially through distance learning. And we've had an addition of one FTE through the remainder of this year to help support us with some of our academic needs. Some really great news to share is Back Bay has recently contracted with Care Solus and one on campus to support many of our students with their social-emotional needs, and we look forward to that getting off the ground. At Back Bay, we perform a lot of home visits. We hold a lot of SSTs. We have SART and SAR meetings. And then on the positive side, PTA and ASB recognize students for things like perfect attendance and most improved attendance with monthly certificates, awards, and that's part of our PBI strategy. That's what I have to share with you today. Thank you.
I don't see any. I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. The one FTE teacher that was hired for the remainder of the year, what is that for?
She's teaching English. We have, you know, with the ability to cap a class no more than fifteen students to, to maintain safety, we have found that we have a need for junior and senior ELA opportunities where we need to offer more, our students more chances to get into the classes that they need.
Any other? Mr. Drake.
Okay, last but not least, we have the Estancia Zone with Dr. DePauli Pottnas from T-Winkle and Mr. Mike Holt from Estancia.
I can officially say good afternoon. It is past twelve o'clock now, so it is great to see everybody. And once again, appreciate the opportunity to be able to share how things are going at T-Winkle. So yes, education looks very different right now. And I would say that our teachers have done a tremendous job, and our office staff as well, at navigating the changes in education. We've moved into hybrid, and I've seen our teachers do a dynamic job of being able to navigate students both in-person while being able to teach students on a computer at the same time, and so I give them a lot of credit. And one of the, one of the things that was a challenge initially while we were one-to-one with Chromebooks very early on, even prior to my arrival here, we recognized that there was an access issue in relation to technology for our students at home. And so very quickly, we worked with our district to be able to provide students with hotspots so that they were able to have access, and then making sure that students' devices are always working so that they can engage academically. In terms of grades, we, we have seen some challenges in relations to Ds and Fs with our students in both the seventh and eighth grade. Thirty-three percent of our students currently have received a Ds and Fs. And while it does really break my heart to say this, fifty-two percent of those students are English learners. Twenty-six percent of those students are RFEPS students, which are students that have reclassified, were at one time English learners and then reclassified. And then nineteen percent of those students are classified as English-only. So this, in fact, really means for us that this is an increase in Ds and Fs in all of our subgroups. And what the pandemic has really done is amplified the disparities between our socio-economically disadvantaged students and our app-promised students in comparison to more of our affluent student populations. And that has existed, that has always existed, you know, locally in our, in our school district, locally, state, nation. But this pandemic has really shown that there has been an increase in that. I have one more slide, I promise. So I want to share what my focus was prior to the pandemic, so you know the work that we were engaged in. Having gone to the conference with many other principals in our district, we went to a conference on MTSS and the idea of knowing our students' names, faces and stories. And so really thinking about a student holistically, not just academically, but what their social-emotional needs are, thinking about their backgrounds and how we could tie that into the academic setting. And so we participated and our teachers participated in. We were in the process of EL shadowing, where our teachers would follow an English learner for the duration of the day to really understand in the lens of that student what that student was experiencing. And we, we have experienced learning rounds where our teachers have gone to each other's classrooms, but not just each other's classrooms, classrooms in schools within our district and also outside of our district to see what engagement strategies would help our students. And then also to be able to celebrate the work that they were already, our teachers were already doing. Because at the end of the day, one of our focuses really is empowering the idea of student voice in the classroom and in our schools. Some of the work that we were doing as a district that we didn't necessarily see out to fruition just because the pandemic had happened and we had to change our focus, but the idea of grading for equity and PD around the standards. So to measure what students are actually learning and then grading them based off of that. But that was kind of put to a halt because then we had to navigate distance learning and how to teach our students in a new, in a new format. So since the pandemic, and this is also similar to things that we have done prior to, but you know, when, when we think about social-emotional needs, it's really been an all-hands-on-deck approach. So outreach by our school psychologist, our social worker, our counselors, our teachers, our school community facilitator, who has just done a phenomenal job of keeping in touch with parents and our office staff and, and contacting them in different ways, whether it be via phone, whether it be via Zoom meeting, and just making sure that we're in contact. And similar to what my colleague shared in the past, making sure that we can maintain a positive culture. So we're still focusing on PBIS. We're still making sure that we have activities happening on campus. Right before we went to our president's recess, you know, we had our Valentine's music out, and you know, it was just great. And then when we noticed that we have some students that are, you know, absent for a reason and we're, we're finding a reason for concern, we're definitely open and have done home visits to ensure that our students are okay and that we can get them back and engaged in the school setting. Since, since the pandemic in regards to attendance, and this is something that we've also done pre-pandemic, but that, that immediate outreach from our office staff regarding attendance, calling families, letting families know and reminding students of attendance expectations. And then once again, that outreach from teachers regarding attendance too, because there is a correlation between student attendance and the impact on learning. And then since the pandemic with academics too, once again, outreach from our teachers and office staff to get our students engaged. And I appreciate the question that was presented earlier in regards to summer. In the past, our, our summer has been focused on our English learners. And so we, we take data based off of the students' LPAC, their most recent LPAC. And we create a summer program to, one, familiarize our students with our campus and get them acquainted with what our middle school looks like. In addition to engaging them with some of those WICHER strategies that Dr. Martinez had mentioned before, since it is focused more towards our avid Excel students. So a student that might place LPAC level two or three or even maybe four might be able to participate. We provide transportation for our students so that they can come onto campus and get engaged a little bit prior to the start of school. Now, obviously, that looked a little bit different last summer, and students were engaged with their packets. But we're hoping that we can have a summer program that looks robust as it has in the past. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, trustees. Thank you for your time. Speaking of time, I, I know it's late in the afternoon, and we've been at this for a while, so I'll try and be as concise as possible. Much of what you're going to see and hear is very similar to what some of my colleagues have talked about as far as the challenges, as well as our mitigation efforts. To sort of build on Dr. Gogel's analogy of the, the storm that is pandemic wrecking tide against the other boats. The, the challenge that we have at Estancia is that the boat in which, that houses our historically disadvantaged students is incredibly large and the hole is even larger. What I'd like you to do is just turn your attention to the three bar graphs that are small in the left-hand portion of your, of your screen. What this shows is the grade distribution at Costa Mesa, Estancia and Newport Harbor. The point I'm trying to make by this illustration is that Estancia is not unique when it comes to the learning outcomes. And the, the similar theme of students who have come from positions of historical advantage are doing very well, and students who come from positions of historically disadvantaged are struggling more than ever before. If you shift your focus to the right-hand portion of the screen, what you'll see is three sets of two, two bar graphs. What these bar graphs illustrate is the grade distribution of all of Estancia's students when you disaggregate it and break it down by language fluency. The reason why I choose to show the data this way is because showing grade distributions by language fluency is also really another way of sort of demonstrating the performance outcomes based on historical advantage and historical disadvantage. So the two bar graphs on the far-left-hand side show you the grade distributions for our English language learners. Those are our students who are either newcomers or have been with us perhaps for twelve years, but still haven't mastered true fluency in the English language. The key takeaway from those two bar graphs is when, yes, the percentage of students receiving As did go up slightly during the pandemic, but when you compare January of two thousand and nineteen to January twenty-twenty, in other words, pre-pandemic to pandemic, you'll notice that the percentage of students who are English language learners who received a grade of F has more than doubled. If you shift your focus to the two bars that are in the middle of that screen, it's labeled RFEPs, are reclassified as English proficient. And I really want to pay attention to this one, because students who have reclassified as English proficient, there are students who entered the school district, indicated that a language other than English was primarily spoken at home, and then they worked really hard to reclassify as English proficient. Typically at Estancia, our reclassified English proficient or RFEPs are some of our hardest-working and highest-achieving students. In fact, over the last six years since I've been at Estancia, most of the valedictorians are, are reclassified English proficient students. While their percentage of, of As has also gone up in this last year, you too will notice at the bottom of that graph that the percentage of our hard-working RFEPs who have failing multiple, one class or more, has more than doubled during the pandemic. If you turn your attention to the last two bars, what this shows is the performance outcomes and grade distributions for our English-only speaking students. The key takeaway from these two bar graphs is that the percentage of students who are failing and English-only has not really been impacted by the pandemic. The difference between five percent and six percent really has nothing to do with outcomes, but really about the statistical size of the cohorts we're measuring. However, if you look to the top of those two bars, you will notice that the percentage of students who are English-only, who are receiving our highest grades, has gone up by twenty percent. That is an overwhelming positive outcome. However, it highlights the problem that we have at Estancia, in Newport Mesa, in Orange County and in the United States. And that is the incredible inequities that exist in our communities and play out in our schools when it comes to those who are advantaged and those who are historically disadvantaged. If we go to the next slide, what I'd like to, for you to look at is those things that are in gold represent the conversations that have been going on at Estancia when it comes to what does the conversations that have been going on at Estancia when it comes to what does the data tell us? We've been grappling with this issue for quite some time. If you look to the comments that are in red on the right-hand side of your portion, you'll see some of the recent actions that we have been taking and actions that we plan on taking to help mitigate this learning loss and these equity issues. Three things I'd like to emphasize, like all schools, we're struggling to try to provide the proper amount of tutoring support for our students. There are limitations to what sites individually can do. And those that are benefit from having large foundations are able to do more. I'd also like to emphasize the, our ability to provide students opportunities for credit recovery and course repetition because of the unique nature of our structure as a four-by-four school. And the fact that many of the students who failed a class were able to be immediately reprogrammed to help stem that learning loss, get them back on track as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, the number and percentage of students who are struggling exceeds our internal capability for self-remediation and assistance. We are planning on working with the district to offer an incredibly robust summer school larger than we've ever offered before because our needs are greater than before. Despite this, we will still have, we'll still face challenges that exceed our local capacity. And I look forward to working with district staff to try to remedy, remedy these issues. So that way we can ensure that all students at Estancia graduate on time, college and career ready. I thank you for your time and your attention and the Estancia Zone stands willing to answer any questions that the trustees may have.
Checking for hands. Trustee Bartel.
Yes, mine's more of a global question now that we've seen all the zones. And I wanted to ask if we could get, Mr. Knights, we still have Tableau, correct? I would, I would love to see, but I also want to make sure that I'm not giving you more work if everyone doesn't agree. I'd love to see the Ds and Fs kind of broken out among middle school and kind of waited for social emotional and absenteeism. I know that Tableau can kind of look at that, all of those ways. And then again, for the high schools, because I think in middle school, we're doing some study skills habits and you know, learning and it's a different approach where in high school, the stakes are a little bit higher and credit recovery is more important. But only if everyone else is on board with that. I think it would just help us understand our picture a little bit better.
Absolutely.
For, for the whole district, not just by zone.
And Mr. Drake is shaking his head, yes.
Thank you.
Your, your name's not up here, trustee Metoyer.
Oh, I just put it up. That's okay. Mr. Holt, Mr. Holt, sorry about that, just changed your name. Did you survey, do you have you informally or formally asked your students? You had such great success that for, with the, the high performing students in the As. Do you attribute that to the four-by-four? Did they like it? Did they, have you heard feedback? I'm curious to your success. I was very positive and I'm, I'm like one of your biggest, one of the biggest fans of the four-by-four plan. So I'm of course hopeful that for its success, but I'm, I'm also a realist. So how, how's it going?
Hey, thank you trustee Metoyer. I appreciate your, your support and your advocacy for the work we're doing at Estancia. So first I'm going to be honest with you, and it's hard to really tease out the success and the challenges that we have and attribute them to the structures and supports that we're using. Is that a direct result of the four-by-four? Is it a correlation between our shift from distance learning to hybrid in-person learning? There's too many factors for me to concurrent, to positively state. This is the direct result of some of the outcomes we've seen. We are, every time I have the opportunity to interact with students, I'm asking them questions about how they're doing at Estancia, how they feel about the work we're doing together as a four-by-four school. This week, we're in the process of formally surveying all students and parents to get their input to see if we're achieving some of our stated goals. Did the structure of the four-by-four provide students less stress in their day? Did the structure of the four-by-four provide students a greater ability to focus on the rigorous coursework on hand? Did the structure of the four-by-four allow them to be as successful or more successful than they wanted to be? We're also asking parents similar questions and we're going to be, we're having these conversations as professional staff. Several of the teachers also wanted all staff members to be surveyed, surveyed. So that way we can get a more holistic picture. What I've told our staff is that we will look at all the data and then we will have, once again, have a faculty vote to make a determination as to whether we'll be a four-by-four school again next year. The initial vote was for the pandemic and for this year. And I'm very intrigued to see if all stakeholders are supportive of the idea of going forward as a four-by-four school to see if we can reap those advantages that we believe the structure will provide.
I was just a few weeks ahead of the answers to my questions. So I'm looking forward to the outcome, when you get the results. Thank you.
Trustee Wagon.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if what you think, do you think that more time on campus would help your students if they were in, you know, a normal day, having them be, you know, on campus five days a week? And if that is the, you know, solve for all of the doubling and failures of Ds and Fs? And then also, how is the morale of your teaching staff doing with four-by-four? And the potential or wanting the kids to be back on campus full-time?
So I'll say the, the morale of the school is high. I, I will say though, this is hard and challenging work. And so our professional staff is tired. And unfortunately, we don't see all positive indicators of student learning outcome that can be used to, to motivate, inspire. But we are seeing enough and some of the best examples come from those soft data. How students respond when they're physically in the, in the classroom? So the short answer, do I believe that students would do better when they're on campus full-time? Absolutely, to my heart of hearts. We have the smallest percentage of students who are in, I'll say, a cohort C for a reason. We have the smallest percentage of students who have chosen to attend the cloud for a reason. You know, our students, our parents and our teachers all realize that at Estancia, learning is best in a social environment that is controlled and led by a caring adult. And we believe that we will see better learning outcomes when we return to full in-person instruction. That being said, the challenges that exist in the Estancia Zone, K through 12 are huge. The need for additional support, additional resources. So that way we can effectively do our job to ensure that every student who enters the Estancia Zone as a kindergartner will reclassify as English proficient and graduate on time, college or career ready is paramount. But the data clearly shows that that moral mission has not yet been achieved. And it's a mission that myself and every teacher at Estancia looks forward to achieving.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I love that, a moral mission. I absolutely agree. Um, I was wondering about, this is also a district-wide question, but can be specific to for Estancia Zone. How are we using our community partnerships and when will we be reaching out to them? Because I know there are a lot of partners who are waiting with bated breath to help and they have kind of been placed on hold. So how are we currently using them? When will we reach out and bring them in?
I'll, I'll start it off and I think the, at Estancia, and you heard from the, the schools who currently have a relationship with a community partner, how we're really tapping into that and being able to help use that partnership to have a better positive influence on the conditions in which our students learn and the outcomes that they receive. The challenge was, which I think to your question, is best be answered by Mr. John Drake, which is how are we going to build greater relationships, more relationships? And when will that growth occur? And so I'll defer to the chief academic officer to answer the second part of your question.
Yeah. And, and so trustee Anderson, if you can just kind of help me understand a little bit of where you're coming from, because I was approaching that in my head more from a, a social emotional relationship part with outside agencies providing additional support. Is that where you were coming from?
Well, so in the most recent community alliance meeting, there was a bit of a feeling of intervention and help from a lot of our partners is on hold. So it's been really awesome to hear so many of the virtual tutoring opportunities that are going on now for junior high and high school, but that's still not happening at the elementary level. And we have a lot of folks who specifically target or care for families who are housing unstable or are really at high levels of familial stress. And they are literally like at our doorstep knocking, asking how they can help. And there hasn't been an easy on-ramp for them. I'm not, like, we're almost to March. And so I just am wondering when, what that rollout is going to look like and how we are going to approach them, because they've already approached us and said, here we are. Here's what we're willing to provide. Thank you.
We, we have Mrs. Jackham who would love to speak today.
Yes, absolutely. I, I'm sure Mr. Drake could do a fine job with that as well. But what I can share from the student services perspective is that we do continue to work with all of our partners. What we've been limited to is, is who we're allowing on our campus. And we've set that from the beginning with COVID of really not allowing visitors on our campuses, right? We don't allow parents to hang out. We don't allow visitors. And so with some of these community partners, a lot of their work needs to be done in person and on our campuses. So that's where we've been limited. And I will reach out again to Kristin Henry and to Dr. DiAgostino in terms of, of looking at what we can do with our partners virtually and being able to ensure that we're supporting, you know, students and families as best we can. But I, at this point, based on the guidance, we are not opening our campuses to any outside folks to come in and provide services.
Thank you. Yeah, I know the virtual piece is still at the forefront, but I'm wondering too, as we think about starting to transition to extended learning, perhaps in the afternoon or even offering, you know, partnerships, maybe with the city of Costa Mesa, the city of Newport and their rec. Where are we on some of that? I haven't heard an update on that recently.
That might be superintendent, the rec partnerships is not.
First of all, I want to just piggyback on what Dr. Jockham said, that she's absolutely right. You know, we've been throughout this pandemic trying to weigh the, the safety and the guidance, applying the guidance to providing services. So we're, the partnerships are still there. It's just, it's looking different. And I, as the numbers in our county and our cities become better, and by the way, I just took a little peek and our numbers continue to go down in the right direction, that we can start looking at ways to start bringing services back onto campus. So just because we haven't done that yet, doesn't mean that that's not going to happen at some point this school year. Okay? And certainly with the numbers coming down and us getting better at applying these safety protocols, you know, we'll find ways to be able to provide those services and, and maintain our safety. And in terms of these other programs, trustee Anderson, can you repeat some of those examples that you just stated?
Yeah, well, we, we have a lot of partnerships across the district, but I mean, even just having conversations with the city of Costa Mesa or city of Newport. You know, there have been a lot of really successful recreation programs in the city of Newport specifically already. So are we having those conversations? Maybe that's an option even just for families, you know, if there's, for instance, Polerino has a city park right next to it. Kaiser, the same thing. So if we're able to have some of those partner conversations, they're not necessarily happening on our campus per se, but they're serving our students directly.
Okay, to answer that question, I have not had any recent conversations with the city in terms of what they plan to bring back. Just keep in mind, over the last few weeks, we have been at the highest point of this pandemic. So as things start coming down, I think this is the time to start re-engaging with our, our city partners and seeing what we can do in terms of additional opportunities and support.
Great, thank you. Oh, I have one more question. I'm not sure if DePauli is still on. I was just wondering about the, oh hello, about the LPAC testing. So did that go, I know a lot of the other testing was put on hold this year or was not enacted in the same way? Did that impact LPAC testing at the middle school level in any way or?
Yeah, so last year, we didn't go through with all of LPAC testing, but this year we're going to be testing in the month of March. And so we're hoping that we do get that data during the summertime, which we always have. And, and honestly, we are, we are waiting during the summer when I'm working on student scheduling and the master schedule. I literally wait until I have the most accurate data to be able to place students in classes. So like, so for last year, I did have to use the year before that's data just because we didn't have LPAC data to work with. But I'm hoping that with LPAC being administered in the month of March, that over the summer, we will get the results and then we will be able to appropriately place students.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Something to that?
Yes, on district-wide, trustee Anderson, LPAC, my teams are out at the sites and we're making progress. Some of it is remote, all social distanced. It's pretty remarkable. I've got five teams out there working hard at all the different sites. So we have a schedule that we believe is enough to complete the LPAC testing for this year. Tomorrow, when the state board of education meets, we may hear that windows are extended. But my suspicion is that the LPAC will continue this year. It was waived last year, but we did do a makeup in the fall so that we could hit some of the students on, or administer the, the LPAC to some of the students who were closest to reclassification. So I would say that would be the worst case, is something like that scenario might happen again. But the state, I believe, is committed to the LPAC carrying through. And we hope to finish it by, at the end of this window so that DePauli gets her data in the summer.
Thank you so much. That's a great update, George.
Trustee Orsolo.
Hi, thank you. Is principal Holt still on the call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I really appreciate the way that you made that data comparative from year to year so that we could see across those subgroups. I'm curious, are you noticing any major distinctions by grade level? Are some grades struggling more than others or is it across the board similar?
No, thank you for the follow-up question. You know, historically at Estancia, ninth grade has been a challenge year. And we've worked really hard to try to mitigate some of those challenges by bringing in additional programs and resources such as Link Crew. Unfortunately, what the data clearly shows is that the negative impact that came down on students really hard last March, when the pandemic first set in, continue to negatively impact student learning outcomes today. By that, I will say that while the percentage of class fails is, has always historically been the highest at the freshman level. What we have seen is that negative outcome continue on into the sophomore year. So at this point, at Estancia, if you look at our underclassmen, both ninth and 10th graders, the highest, the most frequently awarded grade is an A, but the second most frequently awarded grade to a student in ninth and 10th grade is an F. We've never seen negative learning outcomes like that before. And I think that just goes to the challenge that we have and how its impact is not just for a moment, but the negative impacts continue on and must be addressed. So it's not just credit recovery, but learning recovery. And that is a challenge that most schools are not traditionally set up to, to meet. Traditionally, schools can look at remediating one or the other, but trying to remediate both at the same time in such large numbers is sort of, right now is, is almost overwhelming to, to us at Estancia.
Thank you. And I know that we heard from the Newport Harbor principal that they have a great selection of tutors. They have about nine tutors that are full-time with their students. Does Estancia have an elaborate tutoring program? And actually, this question is for Dr. Potness too. What is the status of the tutoring program? What is the status of the tutoring programs at both of your sites?
Sure. Well, the Estancia T-Winkle Foundation does a, a great job of providing support to Estancia High School and T-Winkle Intermediate School. The simple fact is, is that your, your more affluent schools have more affluent foundations. What our foundations operating entire, you know, not just our operating budget, but the, the total, total amount of all the money that is, is used to accumulate things is less than what the money that say CDM's foundation gives to that high school alone. So we're coming from a position of a disadvantage when it comes to that. So our tutoring effort is not as robust. And so rather than being as targeted and ongoing as what you see at Newport Harbor, what tutoring looks like at Estancia comes into one of two shapes. Either we have two classes that we call Tutor Core, which is mandatory tutoring for pre-identified ninth graders. It's a class that goes on during the day and it becomes an additional classes, an additional level of support for pre-identified students. And then we also use our foundation funds to provide what I'll call just-in-time tutoring. So typically, what we do is we hire teachers, because they're the only ones who've been cleared right now to work with our students, to provide after-school tutoring in the two weeks running up to final exams. So our financial, as well as our logistical realities that exist at Estancia only provide for the mandatory tutoring or the just-in-time tutoring.
Thank you. So from your vantage point, to have the actual robust tutoring that you think you would need, do you think that would be double the resources, quadruple the resources? What, what kind of level of support would get you to where you think you need for your students?
Well, I think the, the simple answer isn't, you know, doubling what I'm spending. But if we could have a comparative level of, of resources to that, say, a school like Newport Harbor. For us to offer what Harbor is doing, we need to have the resources of Harbor. I would actually modify that statement by saying, since our numbers of historically disadvantaged students are larger, we probably need a little bit more than what Harbor receives. But that's not the way foundations work. Foundations give based on their ability to give. And I greatly appreciate what the Estancia T-Winkle Foundation is able to do. Unfortunately, what they're able to do is limited by the assets that they have in hand. Great people doing great work. You'd also, you know, perhaps there's more that I can do to work with that services, to try to find resources inside the district. So that way, we're not always turning to community partners for the sort of assistance that the data shows is clearly needed and great numbers.
Thank you. That's helpful. And one last question, given that it's ninth grade, that is so tumultuous. Is there a partnership between T-Winkle and Estancia to target those eighth graders that are coming into ninth grade that you already know from being at T-Winkle are going to need that support?
Yeah, no, one, one of the things that's, it's really, really great is the relationships and connections that exist between the Estancia staff and the T-Winkle staff. And that starts from the, the personal and professional relationship that I have with Dr. Potness, through the way that our school community facilitators work and connect with each other. So we always receive a list of students from T-Winkle who would benefit from additional services. By this point in our working relationship, T-Winkle staff, at least when you talk about their administrative staff and their school community facilitator, are very aware of the resources that we do provide. Who needs, who would benefit from that mandatory tutoring class? And so we do a really good job. Pre-pandemic, the data clearly showed that that type of early intervention, when we communicate with each other, we pre-identify our most at-risk students who will, who've been identified to benefit from that type of additional service, are placed into the program and what we saw was incredibly positive learning outcomes for those students. We just don't have the ability, that's a, that's a class that we typically run out of our own FTE allocation. In other words, by offering one less class of X, I'm able to create a course for tutoring support. We didn't run that class at the start of the pandemic, because we didn't feel it would be beneficial during an all-Zoom experience. We did receive some funding from the district that, that they got as part of the CARE Act money. So we are running that second semester right now. But again, like my experience has been, that's either a program that I pay for out of pocket or the district provides federally available funds for.
Thank you so much.
And just also, I'll say, they, we too have seen a dramatic positive outcome for our seniors. But like Dr. Bolton said, I, I think that really speaks to the fact that they are system survivors, that they have learned how to survive in the system, or they have been transferred to another system such as Back Bay. And so when you saw the learning outcomes from Back Bay, I hope everyone kept in mind that Mike Wagner and his staff are doing the absolute best with students who haven't traditionally been able to take advantage of the opportunities at a comprehensive school, or that a comprehensive school isn't the answer for. And I know that he's working with you to try to figure out what is the best way to provide the, the needs and resources for the students at Back Bay, because they are clearly all of our students.
Thank you.
I think we need to wrap it up soon. Are there more questions? Trustee Anderson, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just had one kind of follow-up question with that. So I'm, I love that there's the bridge between middle and high school. And I'm wondering about particularly for this year, when it's such a shock to the system, when kids are changing from six to seven. I'm wondering particularly for T-Winkle and Enson, if some of those conversations are being had as to, I mean, before, there used to be like campus tours or, you know, I mean, what does that look like? And how are we preparing our students for success to be ready for that really amplified and change of coursework and everything? Thanks.
Ashley, can you do me a favor, please? So can you, can you repeat the question that you were asking? Because we do partner up with our, our elementary schools, obviously. And like I said, over the summer, we're looking at data to make sure that we're pulling kids in so that they can come on to our campus. And that's reflective of this, you know, our incoming students as well, not just our seventh graders that are changing into eighth grade. We hold off on doing any type of summer program, usually until August, so that we do have the most updated data. But in addition to that, prior to our students coming, like, so for instance, we do a huge zone activity, not as, well, yeah, a zone activity, a feeder school visit, which we weren't necessarily able to do. But we had our teachers that created videos of things that are exceptional and amazing about our schools, also sharing about our electives, so that students are able to opt in and pick classes based off of what we are offering. And when we, we worked with the elementary school principals to push that information out and to our parents of, of the elementary school, so that they were also aware of what was happening. Because we couldn't do the feeder school visit, which is a huge event in our zone, but we tried our best virtually.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, the answer is a bit, I wonder what is going on at Enson? Because I know that particularly, you know, when, for Whittier, and then sometimes race students go to Enson, it's just a huge culture shift. So really, anything that we can think of creatively, particularly this year, I think is really beneficial.
So I added it in the chat as well, but last year, since we were not able to host our on-campus visit, we did a virtual tour of Enson, which we will put together again. We hosted town hall meetings in the evenings with each of our feeder schools with translation in a webinar format. This year, we're also preparing a video that shares details with all of our elective teachers and the elective offerings and course descriptions. And then our counselor and AP is going out to all of the sixth grades to visit them, to talk to them about registration and class offerings and the different things that we have available at Enson for next year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, is, I believe that's it. Mr. Drake, if you would like to make final comments. And once again, what, what do we have, five, almost five hours? We need 10 hours. It's, I mean, it's great stuff that we're hearing from all the principals, elementary and high school. And, you know, a lot of good things come out, a lot of things that we need to work on. And we appreciate hearing firsthand from the people who are out there, so.
Yeah, and I think that I'll wrap up also just by saying thank you again to all of our, our principals for the incredible work that they're doing, incredibly hard work and that they're doing currently. And obviously, lots more hard work ahead of us to, to make sure that we're continuing to support the teaching and learning of all kids at, at every site, including, you know, well, just all kids, you know, that, that need the additional support and doing that in a way that's equitable, which is probably another conversation district-wide that we need to have and define, you know, for our, for our schools. So thank you very much to everybody. And again, look forward to, to the hard work ahead.
Thank you. And we appreciate your time here. We are not done, so we up here are not done. We do, we did have some consent calendar items that we had to take care of for timing. So we had no.
May I move to approve the consent calendar?
No, second.
That was Trustee Wagon?
Trustee Barto.
Oh, Trustee Barto. You can't hear where it's coming from. Are there any questions about any of the items? Okay, move by Trustee Montoya, seconded by Trustee Barto, roll call.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Montoya?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
D'Ursoilu?
Yeah.
And once again, thank everyone who was on with us remotely, all of the staff who is here and has been, has been sitting here and participating. We thank you as well. And we do have a regular board meeting coming up in, in March 9th. So that will be our next regular board meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? I move that we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Trustee Crane moved, Trustee Montoya seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.